I'd like to call the Board of Education Regular Meeting, April 23rd, 2025, to order. Are we in compliance with open meeting laws?
Yes, we are.
Will you please call the roll?
Wyman.
Aye.
Carlin.
Aye.
DeWitt.
Here.
Here.
Smiley.
Here.
Right.
Here.
Great.
And tonight, we'd like to welcome some students from Reed Elementary School, Lily, Sophia, and Annalith, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi, Pledge of Allegiance, certified of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in whose love, liberty, and justice are all.
Thank you, Sophia. Annalith. Thank you for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. We are so glad that you're able to join us, and we appreciate the time you took to do it. Thank you very much. And we have the infamous Reed principal here, Emily Eisenstein, to give us some highlights about what's happening at Reed.
Thank you for the opportunity to share an update. I'm going to read right from my notes, because I want to make sure I get it all in here. But I want to start by lifting up and celebrating two incredible teams. My theme this evening for you is going to be the teamwork that it takes and that's happening at Reed. So I want to lift up our custodial team and our office team right away off the bat. Brendan Gunther and Dave Lemke are an incredible day and night custodial pair. Denise May, our secretary, and Molly Dittmer, our building assistant. The difference that these two teams make at Reed has been one of our greatest celebrations this year. And so when you come in, you're greeted by the office team and you're welcomed into a beautiful environment thanks to the work of these two. We are celebrating, I've been with the Oshkosh Area School District, this is my third year, with the privilege of being principal at Reed. We are celebrating an annual reduction in the unsafe and disruptive behaviors at a rate of 50%. So cutting that in half annually has helped us create the conditions for a purposeful learning environment. So we know that powerful change takes time, and that powerful change is happening. I credit much of that to the addition of our Dean of Students and Behavior IST, the additional Behavior IST that we added this year. It's increased our ability to address the social and emotional needs of our students and to build that capacity in our staff as well. Our ESOL population makes up 20% of our student body. Partnerships with local organizations to meet the unique needs of students with refugee backgrounds has made it possible for them to excel in their academics with being brand-new to the country and speaking no English when they get here. We participated in a hygiene drive and have been addressing food insecurities. These are other examples of partnering with the community, all in efforts to eliminate the barriers to high-quality teaching and learning that all of our students deserve. And it takes that teamwork, and that teamwork is happening. Today, you will hear that we get to recognize two Teachers of the Year who work at Reed. They are incredible, and you will hear their individual contributions. But what I want you to know about Christina Cartwright and Callie Schmidt is that they emulate the model of what is possible through co-planning and co-serving students. That teamwork makes the dream work.
Right.
So great things are happening at Reed at 1120 Algoma Boulevard. You're welcome anytime. Stop in and visit a classroom, visit staff members. You are always welcome, and that's Reed. That's us. Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much. And now, we'd like to recognize our Employees of the Year. This is very exciting to be able to honor and recognize this wonderful group of people that really emulate the best of the best in our district. If we could please have Wendy Mendez join us. Please join me in recognizing Wendy Mendez, an interpreter at Val Phillips Middle School, as a 2024 Support Staff Employee of the Year.
Originally from Costa Rica, Wendy has created an impact that extends far beyond translation services.
I'll stop. Do you want to take pictures first?
Okay. Her compassionate approach has been instrumental in creating an inclusive environment for our English-language learners, particularly those with refugee backgrounds. She serves as a vital bridge between cultures, helping students and families navigate both language barriers and cultural transitions. Wendy's ability to foster meaningful connections between Spanish-speaking families and our school community stands as one of her most significant contributions. Her organization of Family Connection Night created a welcoming space where families could gather, share experiences, and learn to navigate the school system together, strengthening the crucial homeschool partnership that supports student success. Her impact on staff development has been equally transformative. Wendy collaborated on an innovative professional development session conducted entirely in Spanish, simulating a newcomer's learning experience. This powerful exercise allowed teachers to truly understand the challenges their students face daily, resulting in more empathetic and effective teaching practices. Beyond her official responsibility, Wendy's commitment to student well-being is evident in countless ways. She helps students access winter clothing and essential resources, assists with transportation needs, and organized a special visit for eighth graders to North High Schools' open house to ease their upcoming transition. Wendy also nurtures the heart of our school community, from organizing pasta parties and baby showers to surprising colleagues with thoughtful gifts. She creates a positive work environment that reminds us all of the importance of supporting one another. Her dedication to personal growth further demonstrates her commitment to education. Currently enrolled in classes at CISA to pursue certification as a licensed Spanish teacher, Wendy's investment in her own learning reflects her profound passion for supporting our students and community.
Do you have a right to put pictures for Seminary Lead? Yeah, yep, that sounds perfect. If we could have Kylene Schragi join us?
Please join me in recognizing Kylene Schragi, school secretary at Lakeside Elementary School, as a 2025 Support Staff Employee of the Year. Kylene is truly a one-of-a-kind treasure whose impact resonates throughout the entire school community. From the moment she enters the building each morning until she departs a day's end, she infuses Lakeside Elementary's with genuine joy and positive energy. Her morning announcements have become a beloved tradition that sets up an uplifting tone for everybody's day, launching students and staff alike into their routine with enthusiasm and warmth. What distinguishes Kylene goes beyond her exceptional organizational abilities or her remarkable skill at managing countless ever-changing responsibilities, in her approach tackling every task with contagious enthusiasm, creativity, and humor that transforms the school environment. Her positive attitude creates a ripple effect that enhances the entire school community. In all interactions, Kylene demonstrates genuine care for her school family. She greets everyone with warmth and patience, ensuring all who communicate with her feel truly seen and valued. Whether handling phone calls, responding to emails, or engaging in face-to-face conversation, she responds with consistent empathy and professionalism. Even in challenging situations, Kylene maintains her composure, responding with kindness and grace while seeking constructive solutions. Kylene's dedication extends far beyond her job description. When Lakeside Girls on the Run program faced cancellation due to a shortage of coaches, she immediately stepped forward to volunteer, ensuring this opportunity would continue for students. Her reliability is unwavering, completing tasks promptly, honoring commitments, and always ready to assist when needed. As one nominator perfectly summarized, Kylene doesn't just fit into the school family, she elevates it. Through her exceptional work ethic, creativity, positive energy, and genuine care, she makes Lakeside Elementary a better place every single day.
And happy Administrative Professionals Day, too. Yes. If we could have Christina Cartwright join us?
Please join me in recognizing Christina Cartwright, an English-speaking of other languages teacher at Reed Elementary School, as a 2025 Elementary Employee of the Year. In her remarkable 24-year career, Christina has redefined what it means to be an educator. Her influence extends far beyond the classroom walls. For Christina, teaching isn't merely a profession, it's calling that encompasses the whole child and their family. In the classroom, Christina collaborates seamlessly with general education teachers, infusing an ESOL perspective into every lesson plan. Her co-teaching approach ensures all students receive effective instruction with special attention to those needing language support. Colleagues praise her proactive problem-solving and open communication style, which fosters a unified approach to education. What truly distinguishes Christina is her commitment beyond academics, recognizing the connection between basic needs and learning success. She provides essential items like beds, clothing, and soccer shoes to families in need. Her partnership with local food pantries address food insecurity, while her organization of holiday gifts and Thanksgiving meals strengthens school-family relationships. Christina's community involvement is equally remarkable. She serves on multiple committees, including the Hygiene Drive, Food Insecurity Collaboration, and Pointers Community Initiatives. Her work with the Winnebago Area Literacy Council and Latin Act Studies at UW-Oshkosh creates valuable connections for her students. She also coordinates counseling services for her students with refugee backgrounds, constantly seeking new ways to support her diverse learners. Colleagues value Christina's proactive problem-solving and open communication, which foster a unified educational approach. Her graciousness, empathy, and collaborative spirit break down barriers to learning and help students succeed both in school and in life. Christina Cartwright exemplifies what it means to be an outstanding educator who is truly dedicated to doing what's best for children.
If we could please have Calista Schmidt join us?
Please join me in recognizing Calista Schmidt, a third-grade teacher at Reed Elementary School, as a 2025 Elementary Employee of the Year. Callie exemplifies excellence in education through her ability to create a classroom environment where every student thrives. Her teaching space radiates positivity and joy, but most importantly, communities, communicates an unwavering belief in each child's potential. Students in her class feel genuinely seen, valued, and challenged to reach their highest capabilities. The transformative power of Callie's teaching is evident in her students' remarkable progress. One parent recently shared how their daughter, previously reading below grade level with a 504 plan, has flourished under Callie's guidance. Not only has the student's reading ability improved significantly, she has developed a newfound love of reading and the confidence to succeed academically, a direct result of Callie's expert personalized approach. As a dedicated arts corps teacher, Callie continuously enhances her professional skills and brings innovation to her classroom. She enriches the curriculum by inviting guest speakers, organizing engaging field trips, and designing creative learning experience that make education meaningful and memorable. What truly distinguishes Callie is her commitment to supporting the whole child. Working extensively with refugee students, she collaborates with community resources to ensure families have access to essential needs like food and clothing. This comprehensive support creates a foundation where academic success becomes possible. Callie creates a classroom environment where students feel safe to take risks, build confidence, and develop both intellectually and personally. Her exceptional ability to support and challenge students while maintaining a nurturing atmosphere makes her not just a leader among her peers, but a transformative presence in her students' lives.
Please join me in recognizing Denise Allers, a cross-categorical teacher at Val Phillips Middle School, as a 2025 Secondary Employee of the Year. Denise exemplifies the qualities of compassion, care, and responsibility that are fundamental to exceptional education. Affectionately known as "The Work Mom" by many colleagues, her unwavering commitment to student success, both academically and personally, makes her a shining example of what it means to truly serve others in the educational field. What sets Denise apart is her deep understanding that genuine learning requires addressing the needs of the whole child. Her remarkable empathy allows her to recognize challenges her students face beyond the classroom walls, and she actively seeks resources to support every aspect of their lives. This holistic approach creates the foundations students need to engage meaningful with their education. One powerful example of Denise's exceptional dedication involve a student living in a car with their family. When the student mentioned lacking a simple frying pan to prepare breakfast, affecting their ability to focus in class, Denise responded immediately. She personally purchased a frying pan so the family could cook breakfast on their hot plate. This seamlessly small gesture had a profound impact, not only improving the student's concentration, but also restoring their dignity and ability to participate fully in learning. Denise's advocacy extends to all her students, as she has worked tirelessly to remove barriers that might hinder their success. Whether securing clothing, food, or other necessities, she creates an environment where every student can thrive with tools and resources they need. As a key leader in special education, Denise fosters a collaborative atmosphere where colleagues feel supported and valued. Her thoughtful, caring approach to leadership elevates those around her, making her an essential part of the educational community. Denise's work reminds us of the profound difference one dedicated educator can make
And next, if we can have Anthony Heffron join us?
Please join me in recognizing Anthony Heffron, a Spanish teacher at Val Phillips Middle School, as a 2025 Secondary Employee of the Year. In just four years with the Oshkosh Area School District, Anthony has established himself as an exceptional educator who creates meaningful connections with students. The lasting impact of his teaching is evident when former students now in high school enthusiastically greet him in Spanish, demonstrating not only their retention of the language skills, but also their fond memories of his classroom. Anthony's commitment to our district's World Language Program truly sets him apart. During a period of significant staffing challenges when his department faced multiple turnovers, Anthony demonstrated remarkable leadership and dedication. He mentored each new colleague, covered additional classes, and created comprehensive plans for substitutes to maintain instructional quality. As one nominator beautifully expressed, Anthony referred to the Spanish program as "our ship" and refused to let it sink, a perfect illustration of his unwavering commitment to student learning. What makes Anthony exceptional is his creativity and bringing language learning to life. He has taken students to local Hispanic grocery stores for authentic language practice and recently collaborated with colleagues to organize a cooking day where students followed Spanish recipes to prepare cultural dishes. These experiences transform language from an academic subject into a living, practical skill. Anthony's dedication extends beyond regular school hours. This year, he volunteered to spend his spring break chaperoning high school students on their Costa Rican trip, eager to reconnect with former students while facilitating an immersive, cultural experience. In all his interactions, Anthony maintains an asset-based perspective, speaking positively about his students, and demonstrating genuine interest in their progress. His sincere commitment to student success is evident in how he inquires about former students by name and consistently volunteers at school events.
Tonight, we also have the special opportunity to recognize an exceptional educator who is just beginning what promises to be an extraordinary career. Please join me in recognizing Aislinn Zerkey, a first-grade teacher at Roosevelt Elementary School, as our 2025 First Year Teacher of the Year. In just five short months, Aislinn has demonstrated what many educators strive for throughout their careers. As one nominator beautifully expressed, Aislinn was born to teach. This natural gift is evident in the classroom family she has created, a community where students genuinely value learning and uplift one another in their daily work. Her students are already thriving and demonstrating remarkable agency as learners, a testament to her innate teaching abilities. At the heart of Aislinn's approach is her understanding that meaningful relationships form a foundation for educational success. She has embraced the conscious discipline philosophy, applying it skillfully in her actions with children. Her thoughtful conversations transform challenging moments into valuable learning opportunities for the entire class, recognizing that teaching self-regulation and school expectations are integral parts of effective instruction. Aislinn's classroom management skills are truly exceptional, creating an environment of high joyful engagement for all students. Her message to her first graders resonates clearly: "We can do hard things. I believe you can do it, and we will get there together." This positive, growth-oriented approach instills confidence and perseverance in her young learners. What sets her apart is her creativity and dedication to student engagement. She employs diverse participation strategies and goes above and beyond to make learning memorable, even dressing in a detective in full character for phonics lessons. Meanwhile, she remains a committed learner herself, asking thoughtful questions, reflecting on her practice, and planning meticulously. Because she prepares thoroughly for each teaching moment, she can pivot flexibly when situations demand, a skill many veterans' teachers work to master. As one nominator affirmed, she is clearly a leader in our profession, who will continue to achieve remarkable things as an educator. And lastly, I'd like to share a bio for an individual who's not able to participate tonight. Amanda Potza, principal of Val Phillips Middle School, as the 2025 Administrator of the Year. Since joining the Val Phillips community in August, Amanda has embraced her leadership role with dignity, grace, and remarkable effectiveness. From her very first day, she has prioritized creating a cohesive community among staff and students, setting the foundation for a successful school culture. Through her steady, empathetic approach, she has implemented the precise leadership qualities needed to guide the school towards excellence. Amanda's commitment to student success stands at the heart of her leadership philosophy. She has established clear expectations, implemented restorative practices, and developed targeted interventions that cultivate a culture of respect, accountability, and growth. These strategic efforts have yielded tangible results, including improved test scores and decreased behavioral disruptions. Her personal touch is evident in thoughtful gestures like sending individual emails to students and parents highlighting their growth in I-ready reading scores, a time-intensive task that profoundly impacts recipients.
Thank you again to all of this evening's award winners and certainly their families and friends that came with them to support them. Appreciate it. Next, we have the land acknowledgement.
Yes, as we gather today, we'd like to acknowledge that in Oshkosh, we are on the ancestry of homelands of the Ho-Chunk Nation and Menominee Indian Tribe of Wisconsin, who lived along the western shores of Lake Winnebago, Wisconsin's largest freshwater lake entirely within its borders. We acknowledge these indigenous sovereign communities who have stewarded this land throughout their generations and pay respects to their elders, past and present. We welcome the duty and opportunity to share stewardship in these lands.
Thank you very much. And next, approval of the agenda. Dr. Hess, you wanted to...
I did request to poll 12, 17, and 18.
Okay. Thank you.
From the consent agenda.
All right. Anybody else?
No.
Thank you. So 12, 17, and 18 from the consent agenda.
This is the one who made the motion. I need to second.
Yep, I'll second that.
All right. What are we voting on?
Polling 12, 17, and 18 from the consent agenda.
Point of war, I don't think we have to vote on this.
If you change the agenda...
I think we do.
I think...
You made a motion to change the agenda. And what a motion is made.
If we notified ahead of time, I believe the policy is that as long as you notify that we would like to change it by 12 o'clock on the day before, which I definitely did, I don't believe this is something that we need to vote on.
I believe we have in the past, so I just assume vote on it, and if we don't need to, we're overdoing it.
So we're just voting to approve, what are we voting on?
To pull 12?
To pull the new agenda.
Yes, for the new agenda.
Carlin?
No.
DeWitt?
Aye.
Carison?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
Smiley?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Thank you. Board President's Report. I have a few things on my report this evening. The first one is the retirement recognition list. We have a few this time. We have Deanna Bales, grade-one teacher, Franklin Elementary School since 2014; Carrie Boers, cross-categorical professional, Oshkosh West High School since 2000; John Chase, building custodian, number three, at South Park Middle School since 1991; John Omen, technology engineering teacher at Oshkosh West High School since 1995; Carrie Pennerboome, literacy teacher, Carl Tregel Middle School, since 1995;
but I knew her at the end of her career, even as she stopped coaching Oshkosh West Swimming. She still remained the head coach for the Sharks, for the Oshkosh Rec Department, and she has inspired so many kids throughout the years and just encouraged them to just keep swimming, including my own. And my kids are going back to that team this summer and do, in a large part, to Coach Boris and her high expectations, and also her motivation for those kids. So I hope she sticks around and keeps on swimming.
Great, thank you. Dr. Herzog?
Thank you. I don't know all of these individuals personally, but I always like to wish our retirees the very best for a long, healthy, and happy retirement. I have had the opportunity to interact with Coach Boris over the years. I know she had a very successful swimming coach career in the school district and has positively influenced the lives of hundreds of students as a result. And John Omen, I've gotten to know over the years in our technology engineering department. He has been a great influence on students in our tech ed program, and so I'd like, again, to wish all of these people a long, healthy, and happy retirement, and to remind them that they're always welcome to come back to the district to visit and/or to serve as a substitute teacher with us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, and next, I would like to have a very special recognition for two of our administrative professionals, and that being Eileen Fitzpatrick and Cheryl Wertz. There is no way that we could operate as we do in this district without all of their efforts behind the scenes. Their professionalism and their fortitude for anything that gets thrown at them is so much appreciated, so I'd like you to join me in a round of applause for the... Thank you very much. And the other item that I'd like to report on tonight is that we have had successful staff negotiations, and tonight we will be voting on that, and we also be voting on the superintendent's contract. So, tonight we have two items on the agenda that we'll be voting on: staff increases and the superintendent contract. For the staff, we are very pleased to announce a 4.5% total salary package increase for the teachers, with 2.9% CPI and 1.55% for steps and lane movement. This agreement showcases the Oshkosh Area School District's commitment to retaining high-quality staff through fair compensation. Chris Wright and Kelly Dwyitt represented the board in negotiations, which were successfully completed with OEA, which is the Oshkosh Education Association. Barb Herzog attended the NTA, the Non Teaching Education Association, and the paraprofessionals' group meetings and shared very similar sentiments. The board deeply appreciates all staff members' efforts throughout the year, and we are very pleased that negotiations went smoothly for all groups. We also have on the agenda the approval of the superintendent's contract. We, as a board, are supportive of our superintendent and are excited to see growth in literacy and math. We understand that results do not change overnight and recognize that the current results are not where we, as a board or Brian, believe we can be. Teaching, support, and administrative staff has worked very hard over the past year to learn new concepts and apply them. With their continued efforts, I have no doubt that our KPIs will improve. Historically, the KPI measurables have not been included in the superintendent's evaluation. There was no need to prior to the superintendent because we didn't even have any KPIs to measure. Brian is the one that insisted on using KPIs so growth and progress could be measured. We are one of the only districts in Wisconsin that uses KPIs as a measurement of success. And at the April 28th Board Organization Meeting, we, as a board, will talk about modifying the evaluation timing to align with the key performance indicators, staff engagement results, and state school assessments. We believe some changes in the timing will make the evaluation more effective and productive. We certainly want to recognize Brian's unwavering commitment to the successful passing of the April 2025 referendum. Brian and staff carried the community-initiated Phase II Facility Plan that was developed in 2019 and adopted by the board in 2020. This long-range plan is forward-thinking and will give our students, teachers, and staff more opportunities to be successful in the future. There was no stone unturned, as Brian gave his utmost to reach as many community members as possible with information they could use to make an informed vote. I want to thank you again for the time that you put into this effort. While acknowledging the challenges, we recognize that our superintendent works tirelessly to continue to achieve student achievement results and is highly regarded in the region for his entire team's accomplishments. The board supports the superintendent and is prepared to contribute to positive changes for the Oshkosh Area School District. Thank you very much. Superintendent's Report.
All right, so a lot of good news going around the district, so I want to be able to share that with the community tonight. Students at Carl Treger Elementary recently completed a collaborative art project with Oshkosh artist Leif Larson. The school created a mural featuring their Timber Wolf mascot. In six school days, every student participated in this creative project, which provided a meaningful experience for students. One excited young artist shared that "It looks so cool when we work together." So congratulations. In March, our Vell Phillips Middle School eighth-grade Rise Crew students, student leaders, took a field trip to Maravita Living, where they played games and made worry stones with the residents. The students applied their skills that they've learned throughout the year to engage the community, and they had a wonderful time connecting with residents and sharing in these meaningful experiences. So thank you to the students for that work. In a perfect Earth Day surprise, the second-grade classes at Franklin Elementary School discovered and rescued a crayfish that was on their playground. A pleasant surprise.
Dear.
A pleasant surprise for most people, if you're in second grade. This unexpected encounter turned into a meaningful learning opportunity, thanks to the skilled teachers who were able to pivot and embrace the situation. Students researched how to safely help the animal, and the guidance to a local aquarium, and then used Google Maps to trace a local stream to the Fox River as the release signal. Then, over the lunchtime, Mrs. Baderman and Mrs. Swenson brought the crayfish to its new home in a real-life lesson in science, geography, and compassion.
Oh, my gosh.
Well done, Franklin Elementary. Congratulations. Students at Oshkosh West High School celebrated their school's annual Diversity Day with a vibrant lineup of student-led cultural presentations and performances. The event featured traditional dances and musical performances, as well as spoken-word pieces and a student-led panel discussion on identity, culture, and belonging. Diversity Day continues to be a powerful tradition that brings the Wildcat community together to learn, appreciate, and celebrate the many cultures that make up their school. South Park students enjoyed a business and leadership lunch and learn, thanks to the Oshkosh West teachers and students. Our middle schoolers were able to explore high school business and leadership classes, potential career pathways, and marketing projects. They also participated in interactive leadership activities, gaining valuable insights into the world of business and leadership. At Oakwood Elementary, second graders enjoyed a fun and meaningful learning experience about the product market. Through hands-on activities, they explored concepts like goods versus services, needs versus wants, and producers versus consumers, all while practicing focus and collaboration. We love seeing their imagination and hard work come together through these impactful learning opportunities. Eighth-grade teen money students at Carl Treger Middle School recently reviewed the value of their stock market portfolios after three months of fluctuating investments.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, pretty good time to do that. Each pair of students was given a hypothetical $15,000 in February to invest in three different companies, checking stock values monthly. This semester, students are learning about the importance of long-term investing. We are proud to celebrate our incredible educators and staff for their outstanding contributions to innovative learning. At this year's Celebrate Education event hosted by the Oshkosh Area Community Foundation, over 40 Oshkosh School District educators were honored with grants and awards, recognizing their dedication and innovation both in and out of the classroom. From impactful classroom projects to after-school initiatives, these educators continue to make a lasting difference in the lives of their students. Oshkosh West students in English II honors and Global Academy English II took on the challenge of reading Born 1982, a powerful modern Korean novel. They brought their interpretations to life through creative projects ranging from board games to paintings to poems to dioramas. Students then presented their work at the Great World Text Conference at UW-Madison, along with students from 27 schools across Wisconsin, and had the incredible opportunity to hear from the book's author. It's an honor, as we did, well, it's an honor to recognize the accomplishments of our alumni, knowing that many of our graduates go on to do remarkable things. Recently, we celebrated alumni from Oshkosh West and Oshkosh North in this year's recognition ceremonies. Jeanette Fennell, Oshkosh High School, class of 1972, received the West Distinguished Alumni Award for her advocacy in child safety and lifesaving contributions to motor vehicle safety standards. David Aniya, Oshkosh North, class of 1988, was inducted into Norris Alumni Hall of Fame for his global impact as a drummer, singer-songwriter, and producer, positively influencing people around the world through music. Both recipients shared powerful messages of encouragement with our students during their ceremonies. You can learn more about each alumni on our website. E. Cook Elementary recently celebrated Maker Day, where students had a chance to create three-dimensional shapes and learn to use their 3D printing pens. It was a hands-on experience that sparked creativity and innovation in the classroom. Our Wave Robotics students proudly represented Oshkosh at this year's first world championship in Houston, Texas, an international event featuring over 600 teams from around the globe. Despite tough matches, the team was selected to join Alliance Six, captained by a team from Canada, showing the respect they've earned from their peers worldwide. With just one week to prepare, our students rose to the occasion managing logistics, travel, and strategy with incredible professionalism. It was an unforgettable experience that showcased both the talent and the heart of the students. Congratulations on yet another incredible season. And as a reminder, our families and community are encouraged to learn more about our robotics program this Friday during a showcase and fundraiser at our middle school robotics team, Buckstein Vulcan, as they head to Nationals. The event is happening at Perry Tipler Middle School this Friday, April 25th. Doors open at 6:15, and the program and demonstrations start at 6:30. And also, there's still time to get tickets for this year's Derby Day Gala fundraiser happening Friday, May 2nd, at the Waters. Proceeds for this year's event go to benefit our athletics, competitive co-curriculars, and adapted sports league. You can learn more and buy tickets at our district website. Ticket sales will end at noon on next Monday, April 28th. Also, before I go into just showcase my calendar, also have another special recognition. We learned this week that Matt Cammer, our Director of Student Services, or People's Services, was named the Outstanding Special Services Administrator of the Year by the Wisconsin Council of Administrators of Special Services for 2025. So I just want to congratulate Matt. Well, that's hot off the press, so we'll have more as we move forward. So congratulations, Matt. And finally, again, out and above in the community, and just excited to continue our great work throughout the district. So that concludes the superintendent's good news report for tonight.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to district administrators' supplemental reports. The first one is a verbal report from April 9th, 2025, Board Listening Session, Mrs. Conrad Peters.
Great, good evening. On April 9th, we had four individuals join us at our listening session. One participant mentioned and talked about field trip reminders within Infinite Campus, not aligning with the actual field trip name, and the request to follow up on how many students may, through that Infinite Campus forum, may not be attending field trips and to look further into that. One person, one participant, expressed concerns about ESOL students not being able to access field trips with translation pieces and making sure that translation services are available in real-time for communication with families. The follow-up action, as we talked about that, is making sure that we're utilizing our opportunities through talking points to be able to do that communication.
What is talking points?
Talking points is an app, an application where you can type in and you can send messages in English, and then it's translated in the other language on the receiving end, either through a text message or email.
What if the parent can't read in any language?
And that's where we were talking about, and talking through, making sure phone calls, personal communications, and accessing translation in real-time services.
Are paper permission slips on the docket?
And paper permission slips, we did explore and went back through that, and we do have translated ESOL for English for speakers of other languages' families, and we do have that. And I'm going to, through the follow-up action items, I'm going to talk through exactly what we've done to follow up with that.
Thank you.
Yes, so overall, the participants were looking for improvement in field trip communications, especially with ESOL families, and the potential language barriers in communication with families. So the following actions have been taken since the last listening session. Number one, aligning the field trip name and/or name of the school with communications coming from IC Messenger. So a reminder and review as process was already conducted on labeling field trips and communications last week. We did, in addition, we will be reminding families not to look at the Documents tab when they are looking for field trips, that we really need to be looking at the activity registration for the full list of what field trips or activities your child has signed up for. Field trip forms for families who request translation are available. We also sent out reminders and further information on how to access translation services so that we can be better communicating with our families in those cases. And yes, we do have paper forms translated in five different languages, simple paper forms translated in five different languages, that are accepted and can be used. And there was a reminder sent on that, that we can be using that process. In addition, I would like to also do a follow-up from the February 26th listening session. Just this Monday, we sent out information to families about having behavior incidents and having information about your child's behavior available inside the Infinite Campus portal. The online access is you can log into IC anytime to view your child's behavior incidents from the current school year. Think of it as attendance for the current school year. And then also, if your child is involved in an incident at school that requires staff attention, we will get an automated email at 4:00 PM on the day of the report that it's completed in our system. But please note that while staff will contact you as soon as possible after an incident, the formal documentation may not appear in there. And with very much an emphasis on, we want personal communication through this. We think that the pieces that we put into place enhance our school-to-home communication, but does not replace our commitment to personal and timely contact with parents and guardians, and we've been following up on that. This improvement also responds to family feedback about staying informed and supports our belief that close homeschool partnerships help children succeed.
Do you feel that you're giving the parent, that we've heard about this request for a lot of listening sessions, do you feel that you are giving parents the data and information that they were asking for?
We felt like we'll ask for additional, we'll ask for additional feedback.
Because I've looked at them, I've seen them now, and I was really disappointed with the lack of substance that's in there. Like, literally, it just says "discipline," or it doesn't give any information. I think what parents are looking for is to be partners in understanding what's going on in the classroom and in the building, and it seems like there could have been a lot more things checked that I hope are documented somewhere in IC that should be accessible to parents. So I hope that we continue to significantly improve this communication source and way of collaborating with parents.
Since I work in healthcare, we use templates sometimes.
Correct.
You know, so that we're not missing any information. Like, I don't know, we've heard about this a bit, you know, like Molly said, parents want to know if there's a behavioral issue and what steps have been taken and where that's at. So I guess just covering as much detail, because if we don't cover the detail between the phone conversation and the notification, myself as a parent, I'm going to be like to my kid, you know, like, "What happened there?" Like, I'm going to want to know. We all want to know to help and to try to up...
Like, I don't know, we've heard about this a bit. You know, like Molly said, parents want to know if there's a behavioral issue and what steps have been taken and where that's at. So I guess just covering as much detail, because if we don't cover the detail between the phone conversation and the, and the notification, myself as a parent, I'm going to be like to my kid, you know, like, what happened there? Like, I'm going to want to know. We all want to know to help and to try to uplift kids because being a parent of three, I know they, they make good choices a lot of the time, but all of our kids always don't and we want to have as much information as possible. So maybe a template of some sort or, you know, like some standard thing, like these are things that the parent needs to know, right? Like, oh, that's just a thought.
Yep, absolutely. And that's one reason that not only did we turn on and make available all of the behavior, the list of behavior incidents inside the parent portal, we made sure that we had that behavior notification email that goes out after 4 o'clock each day, that goes to the families, that goes to the families' emails, that puts in place those exact details that you're talking about so that we do have that communication with families. But once again, that email notification does not replace personal communication and partnership with families. It's just another layer of communication.
Thank you.
As a point number, I think I would appreciate to see a sample of what this actually looks like in open sessions so that we can have a better understanding if parents are satisfied with this or not, because all the feedback I mean, so far is that they're not.
Good.
Let's put that on.
I have a question. Did you, you said that our field trip forms are translated into five languages, five languages?
So we have available hard copies or paper copies in five different languages of a field trip form that can be used with families.
And how many languages do we have in the district?
Altogether, over 60.
Over 60. Is there an effort to get it, the field trip form, translated to those other 60 or 55 languages?
We have them translated in our, like, most, our most common home languages, the top five.
Okay, thank you.
And on the website, they can translate into 61.
Yeah, okay.
I don't think forms on the website.
True statement.
Okay. All right, to be continued. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Conrad Peters, Worker Compensation Claims Quarterly Report.
Right. So this report is the quarterly update on workers' compensation claims, which is a KPI within our 2025 strategic plan under Finance and Operations. So within this, we know that student and staff safety is essential. The mod rate is a numerical form that notes the district is doing, how the district is doing with worker onsite injuries and helps to determine areas of improvement with staff safety. The new rate, our mod rate, has increased to 1.3, which is above the industry average. We know that staff awareness is key to prevention of workplace injuries and creating a culture of safety decreases workers' compensation. One thing that, or compensation claims, one thing I do want to point out is that we've been discussing a lot about student-staff behaviors and injuries, and those would be like incidents that we are tracking, we're putting things into place. But when we start looking at why this, why the significant increase in the mod rate, it's due to high-cost claims, which are like a handful of incidents that were high-cost within 2023 and 2024 that are now in the formula and have significantly increased the mod rate. And you can see that through there. So with that, we take that very seriously. And so working with Mr. Nihans on this, we are going to be doing the following so that we can be reducing the mod rate below 1.0. A review of the current OASD insurance broker and workers' comp carriers' plan and services was conducted in February and March as soon as we found out that we were going to be going up that much. The review showed in the district, that the district requires targeted expert assistance to plan to reduce the mod rate and increase the focus on safety for all OASD staff. Because as we're looking at those significant high-cost claims, they are in the areas of slips and falls or injuries during physical, like, activity. So there's this, right now, we have a narrative that it's students' behavior, student-staff behavior and injuries, and actually, it's slips and falls that are causing the high-cost claims. The OASD will engage in a new insurance broker and propose a change in workers' comp carrier to achieve rapid change. A 90-day and one-year plan will be created to reduce the mod rate to below 1.0 in three years. The plan will be presented to the Facilities and Finance Committee for board review. And the OASD continues to review each incident of student-staff injury, like as we have done in the past. The incident is reviewed by the supervisor, building administrator, and/or director, and then areas of compliance and non-compliance with policy are identified. So we are looking at this and taking this very seriously. We had a brief discussion about this in Facilities and Finance, I believe, last week.
Questions? Thank you very much.
This, this, the results of this report really concern me. The mod rate data go back to the 2020-21 school year, and this is the highest it's been over the five years, six years that this, five years that this has been reported. We've had para-professionals come to listening session and public forum and express concern about incidents involving students. One of the things we've heard is that the district looks to provide staff awareness and training. When students are injuring staff, they're striking students, or they're striking, they're being struck by students, I think there needs to be more than staff awareness and training. We have a number of behavior interventionists in the district. We've invested heavily in PBIS and conscious discipline as well as other forms of, of better behavior. And I know that we, we've seen, we will see a report later tonight on reducing the incidence of suspensions, but I think we've got to do more. To wait for three years to reduce this mod rate from 1.3, to me, is not acceptable. And to have this many staff members, 15 of 32 paras, 15 of the 32 incidents that you said, excuse me, there were 51 incident claims where staff were being struck by students, and of those 32, 15 were paras. So that doesn't tell me that we're, we're doing a very good job with that. So I think we've got to do more with the behavior interventionists, the PBIS training, the conscious discipline, and other forms of actions that help our students learn to behave better. I don't think this is all on the shoulders of the people who are being struck, spit on, kicked, as we've heard from our paras, not to mention the other 19 staff members who were struck who are not part of the para group. So I'd like to see us do a better job with this. Being at a 1.3 rate and having us be at the one-star rating is not acceptable for me.
I do want to point out that the one point, that when you look at mod rate, it is a three-year rolling average of the amount of money on claim, the amount of money on high-cost claims. And so when you look at your, when you look at your numbers over the past five years, it's going, because it's three years within the formula, that's why it's going to take that long to get to that number. But I do want to say that we are looking at taking like the drastic actions that I had talked about in here from the change in broker and also workers' complaint to go right at why that 1.3, why that 1.3 rate. The other piece is when it comes to student-staff and actually working with students within the building, when it comes with behavior interventionist, PBIS, and conscious discipline, et cetera, that, that's a, I want to really point out, that's a separate issue that we are tackling as, as a team within our system. Because you are absolutely correct, Dr. Herzog, that we want to make sure everybody is safe in our schools.
And a lot of these are, we have students that have, because I work a lot with kids that have disabilities, you know, autism, a number of different things. And we have quite a few, or a number of students, that have pretty detailed behavioral support plans. And behaviors can be triggered by real subtle things that not you or I or the common public would even think of. Like, I, I work with some individuals that need really detailed behavioral support plans. So I'm just saying that to say that behaviors can happen and they're not intended by the individual. And the paras have tough jobs, really tough jobs, making sure that these behavioral support plans are followed in the correct way. And I don't think, when the public sees behaviors, they just think like, out-of-control kid, right, or whatever. And that's not, that's not the case, you know, all the time or in a lot of instances. Would that be an accurate description?
Yeah, I would, I would say that we have, we have children with, with needs and challenges, and every student is unique, and that's part of our job is to figure out what behavior interventions that we can put into place to make sure that we have a safe environment for our kids and our staff.
Right. Well, thank you. And thank you to the paras and everyone doing the work. That's commendable.
Absolutely.
You've inspired a new question for me.
Sure.
Is, is there a way to calculate it on an annual basis and not do the three-year rolling average? That I, I understand why you want to do that, but it kind of makes it not timely for us to look at. And so I wonder, can we look at both?
Yeah, that's, that's a really good point, and that's why we've been reporting out incidents or claims or what we would call, what would be called in the insurance industry, like near misses, which actually are leading indicators of maybe where you're going. And that's also what you pointed out, there was another reason that we want to change workers' comp claim carrier and insurance brokers so that we can have better data and a better look at and more support coming in, looking at incidents leading up to this, so that we have that data that it's not, we're not looking at the one, the three-year rolling average. I would agree with you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Schmidt, Cybersecurity Update Quarterly.
All right. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So as, as I am kind of in the habit of saying, this is, there's not very much going on in this report. So it's been, it's been really quiet, thankfully, in the district from a cybersecurity perspective. You will see in the, in the report that we have, our, our training rate continues to decline, and that was due, that was due to a change in strategy that we had at the beginning of the school year. So we're at a 60% completion rate on that. We're going to continue that process for another month, but we already have a plan in place for next year to improve participation. But we figure that we will, like, we'll continue going with the strategy that we've, that we've had because if we stop doing that, the alternative is to do nothing and 60% of our people are participating in their training and building their, and building their skills. The good news of, that, you know, if there is some good news that goes along with that, though, our phishing rate, which is the, that's the highest attack vector that we see from, from an industry, from an industry perspective, we're hovering at about a 12-month average of about 3%, which is incredibly good. So I'm, I'm proud of the, the work that our tech services team has put in on training our teachers and our, our users and the participation that people have had and the level of awareness and diligence that they, that they are putting into those training exercises. We're, we're highly, we are highly successful in meeting those targets. So we'll see improvement on that KPI when we change the way that we go about our, our training next year. I fully, I fully anticipate that we'll be up into the, into the four or five-star range next year when we, when we change that practice.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good news.
And last supplemental report, Student Attendance Quarterly Written Report. Mr. Cammer, award winner.
Good evening. So our attendance numbers don't look all that much different from when I last presented on attendance back in February. So we still are above the state average in terms of our overall attendance rate and when broken down demographically. We're currently at 92.9% for our attendance rate, which is above the, the state average of 92.6%. And it looks like we're going to end the year pretty close to where we were last year, which is a 92.8 attendance rate. So the good news is we're still above the state average. On the other hand, I'd like to see us make more growth in this area. So I'm hopeful that some of the things that we're going to be doing leading up to next school year will bring about more growth from a tenant standpoint going into next year. One dataset that I did include this, for this report that I haven't done previous reports, are the disciplinary removals. So that would include out-of-school suspensions and in-school suspensions. So overall, disciplinary removals make up about 4% of our total student absences. And those, the overall disciplinary removals for our district have been declining over the past four years, but we do continue to see disproportionate rates of student removals, particularly for students who are Black or two or more races, which is something we really need to continue to focus on and address. In terms of some of the things that we're going to be doing going into next year through our Attendance Matters Committee, I think I mentioned last time, we're going to be automating some of our letters. So our letter of concern will be automated going into next year as well as a new letter, which is a three-day notification for habitual truancy, which will be going out to parents just to let them know in advance of meeting the state threshold of five days of unexcused absence, that their child is approaching that number. We're also going to be adding additional attendance code for students who have medical notes when they're absent. So that'll kind of change or factor into at what point students or families are sent medical letters of concern. We're looking at changing the 10-minute threshold at the elementary level in terms of when a, a student absence is considered a tardy versus an absence. So moving that back, I think, will be a little bit more helpful for our families. And then we've already started working on communication going into next year in terms of how parents can use the Infinite Campus parent portal to excuse their child. So just an additional way that they can do that in addition to calling or emailing. And then also really trying to figure out how to promote attendance going into next year in new or unique ways that we have in the past.
Sounds like you're developing some good strategies. I have one question for you.
Sure.
The days removed, 1757, is that 1,700 kids or how many students?
That's days of removal.
But that could be, could one child have more than one day of removal?
Yeah, yeah. So it's, it accounts for all students who have been removed due to an out-of-school suspension or in-school suspension. So that number doesn't include, that's not the total number of students, but out of the pool of students who have received an out-of-school suspension or in-school suspension, that's the total number of days that they have missed over the course of the year.
Important to note, we've been trending down every year the number of days the student's been removed from the classroom. I think that's particularly important because we know if kids aren't in the classroom, they can't learn. And I like to see that, although we all know there's always a lot more work to do. So thanks, so that's going in the right direction.
Yeah, I have comments and questions on that. I appreciate very much that you included the disciplinary removals in this, and I hope you continue to. But I'd like to kind of talk about that related to, obviously, to attendance and then also to academic outcomes, so bear with me here. Because this is something that hit a nerve when we try to pull this all together with our outcomes that we are not seeing from any of our students. Because obviously, disciplinary removals directly impact attendance. If a student's repeatedly suspended, sent out of class, placed in alternative settings, they're missing that instructional time. And that's, those last minutes add up. They also are missing that time with their classmates. That absence is, absence isn't neutral. It builds up gaps in content knowledge, missed assessments, fractured relationships with teachers and peers. And the impacts, they don't fall across, equally across student groups. As we're seeing, we are incredibly disproportionate in who is getting removed from class. And we know from data and from experience and from community concerns and from our own workshops and listening sessions that Black, Brown, immigrant, refugee, and low-income students are disproportionately removed from the learning environment, often for vague or subjective reasons like disrespect and non-compliance as parents now can see on Infinite Campus. This means that they're being punished, not just for behavior, but sometimes for simply existing in ways the system isn't built to accommodate. In short, the kids are most likely to be removed are the same ones that were already underserving and that are already disproportionately not achieving in the classroom. So learning doesn't happen in a vacuum. You can't separate their learning outcomes from the climate, and the learning happens. When kids are surveilled, excluded, or treated as problems to be managed, their ability to feel safe and even engage, take risks, or, or ask questions, engage in the classroom, that evaporates. They don't feel like they're part of it. When students are treated like they're disruptions, more than learners, they lose a sense of safety, belonging, and motivation. The result is kids are disengaged, they have lower test scores, lower literacy rates, lower graduation rates. So given these clear disparities and who is being removed from the classrooms, our Black and Brown students are three times more, their risk ratio is at least three times more than our white students. What direct, and this obviously impacts our attendance data and our percentages of different groups attending and our KPIs. different groups attending and our KPIs. And then this disparity is in the academic outcomes. Does the district recognize a connection between these patterns? And if so, can you or others speak to how the district understands this relationship between disciplinary removals, attendance, and academic outcomes? And what specific steps will be taken to address the ways in which exclusionary discipline practices are contributing to these very terrible academic gaps? And I get that that's a big question, and I know that we're going to be fighting for this for a long time, but we need to start hearing the answers on this.
Yeah, I think there's definitely a recognition that there's a relationship between the areas that you mentioned. And the systemic approach that we've been taking clearly hasn't been working for every group of students equally. So I think that's something we need to continue to focus on and reexamine the systemic approaches that we're taking and really focusing on student engagement. You know, I think that is one of the keys that you mentioned, and I think really that's one of the focuses, you know, Dr. Coleman and the rest of our leadership team. In addition to that, I can speak from a purely disciplined standpoint. On the one prong, we're looking at our systemic approach, but we're also trying to do a better job of digging into our data and really examining individual cases. And trying to figure out trends, particularly for students of color, when it comes to disciplinary action, and then to take a closer look just to see if there's a potential of bias in some of the write-offs that we're seeing. So, you know, I think between those two approaches, that's a start, but I agree that there's definitely a lot more that we need to do.
And I agree that student engagement is obviously incredibly important. However, a kid can't really control how a teacher perceives them. And if a teacher kicks them out of class for doing something that a white student might be doing or perceives them differently, that kid doesn't even have a chance to, to have that engagement or to be themselves in the classroom. So I guess I'm, I'm also looking for what we are going to do, and I'm glad that we are doing after-the-fact evaluation of where there is potential bias. But we need to eliminate that bias. And I would like to see more to be done on the training of staff and perceptions of students because clearly some kids are seen as the problem and other kids are not. And kids that look like my kids are not seen as the problem. And, and that's impacting not just their attendance in school and in the classroom, it's impacting their ability to learn.
Okay. Anybody else?
I know that, excuse me, I know that for discipline reports, we've heard of a number of things that the administration is looking to do, but I, I've yet to hear that one of the strategies is to reach out to parents to find out what parents perceive. As a former assistant principal, there were students who were in my office more than others. And I would frequently call the parent of those frequent flyers and say, what works at home? Because I'm not being successful with your child at school. So how can you help me be more successful with your student? I don't hear those kinds of comments made by administration that we're reaching out to parents to find out because parents know a lot about their kids. And maybe we could learn from them if we reached out to them, find out what's going on. I mean, I, I know sometimes students are bored, and so they, they might do some action out of boredom that gets them in trouble. So how can we engage them more? How can we challenge them more academically so that they don't resort to those other attention-getting types of behaviors?
Agreed.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We now have other reports from the committee chairs. First one is Facilities and Finance.
Thank you, Mrs. Wyman. It's been a busy month for the Facilities and Finance Committee. We had a long list of agenda items at our meeting on April 10th. And so we knew we'd not get through them all that morning, and so we also met on the 17th. So I'll give you a synopsis of the meetings of the 10th and the 17th. On the 10th, we met at 7:30 a.m. One of our first agenda items was the naming request for the North High Field House. Dr. Davis presented the committee with a letter from former Oshkosh North student Tyrese Halliburton regarding Mr. Frank Shady. In the letter, Mr. Halliburton listed the many achievements Mr. Shady had made over his many years of employment with the district. So a request was put forth to name the Oshkosh North Field House after Mr. Shady. The committee discussed this and decided to continue the conversation with the Policy and Governance Committee. Mr. Schmidt discussed the Oshkosh Area School District holding a field test with iPads for students in grades K-2 to see how well they can be incorporated into the classroom. iPads tend to rank higher than Chromebooks when it comes to lifespan and resale value. The purchase had been budgeted as a result of the 2020 referendum. Mr. Nihans and Mr. Jedarsky shared that there has been quite a bit of interest from students in having a boys volleyball team as well as boys and girls lacrosse teams. The discussion covered the possibility of adding a boys junior varsity, boys volleyball team beginning in the 2025-26 school year, as well as a varsity boys volleyball team beginning in the fall of 2026. Discussions covered joining a WIAA co-op with the Appleton Area School District for boys and girls lacrosse teams beginning this, this coming school year. Mr. Fox shared bids for asphalt replacement at Reed Elementary School and the maintenance building. Mr. Nihans shared that he and Mrs. Conrad Peters had been working for some months on ways to improve our mod rate, as we just heard. And so the district will be switching from ANSE Insurance to another insurance and liability carrier with a more detailed plan than what has been experienced in the past. Mrs. Conrad Peters also shared a report from the previous board meeting regarding student fees. A suggestion was made to have the costs of the AP and CAP courses included in the course guide for students so that students and parents were aware of financial support. Mr. Nihans shared information on getting playgrounds funded by Fund 80 and no longer paid for by the, the schools' PTOs or the parent-teacher organizations. And finally, Mr. Nihans shared that the business office will be looking into other workman's comp insurance providers. Then the Finance, Facilities and Finance Committee met again on April 17th. Mr. Fox shared a bid tabulation for front-end loaders, which I believe is on the agenda for tonight. Three bids were received, and Mr. Fox recommended John Deere. And the funds for this will come from the current budget. Mr. Fox was aware of a situation at Menominee Elementary School where there has been some interest in creating a K-1 sidewalk to put in to reduce grass destruction, and he will be working with the school principals on that. It was also noted that there has been a $10,000 donation received by an anonymous donor that will go to Reed Elementary School. Mrs. Johnson shared that there have been negotiation meetings between the district and the union groups to discuss proposals for wage increases. As we've already heard, all groups were in agreement, and all staff groups will get a minimum of a 2.95% increase, with some groups getting a step increase if possible. Mrs. Conrad Peters and Dr. Davis shared information on additional funds that have been received and the potential use of those funds for AGR, Achievement Gap Reduction. Mr. Coleman discussed that he's looking at the current process and where the greatest needs are for the use of these funds. He also discussed his review of work done in the past months and evaluated if any and all or none of the strategies are getting results. He assured the committee that the district will not continue to do the same things if we are not getting better results. And finally, Mrs. Conrad Peters and Dr. Davis shared the changes for the 2024-25 budget, where Mr. or Dr. Coleman and Dr. Brown answered questions regarding AGR funding. Our next meeting of Facilities and Finance is tentatively scheduled for May 8th, following the board reorganization meeting next Monday.
Thank you. And I'm always happy to give Dr. Herzog a little break from her reports. The Legislative Committee met yesterday morning at 8:30 a.m. We discussed multiple legislative items, the first being the CSIS-6 Legislative Breakfast, which Dr. Coleman and Dr. Herzog attended. Topics of discussion that occurred at the Legislative Breakfast were, it seems to be the legislator, legislation, legislative group is, at the state, is wanting to know what the cost to continue would be for a lot of districts. So it sounds like they're planning on wanting to fund what we currently need to extend that, but we won't know that until the legislature, legislative branch decides and the governor decides what they actually want to fund. Act 20 funds were discussed, and apparently the funds are still being held up. If this continues beyond the deadline date, the money may end up going into the general fund for the state. Dr. Davis informed the committee that work will be done over the summer on a five-year forecast that'll provide, provide staffing and budget projections for each year in an effort to make sure that the district is always properly planning staff into the future so that our organization can be more efficient. State legislative updates, there will be a Joint Finance Committee meeting next Tuesday if anyone at all is interested. Apparently, it's a long day, and you can go there and speak on any legislative item that you would like. And where was, where did you say that was being held again, doctors?
That is in Wausau.
And it is in Wausau.
Technical College in Wausau.
Okay, at the Technical College in Wausau. So we're going to have a few representatives from our school district attend that meeting, and anyone in the public can attend it if they so choose. Dr. Davis spoke about legislative being discussed, including a bill for rehiring individuals that have retired so that we can potentially get more teachers back in the system and in our classrooms. So we'll see what happens with that. Green Bay recently agreed to include the voucher amount on their city tax bills. That was approved through the city council, and that was done so that taxpayers could be more aware of exactly where their money was going. Federal legislative update, we talked for a little bit about the potential elimination of the Department of Education, and we'll see what does or doesn't happen with that. WASBE updates from Dr. Herzog. She talked about the governor's legislation with a per pupil increase of $325 per year for 402 years. They discussed that. They discussed Act 20, Reading Literacy Funds, and Act 10. So that was everything, and we don't have another date scheduled for our next committee meeting because we are going to be reorging the school board next Monday. So we will get one scheduled after we find out what new committees we are or are not on. So thank you much.
Thank you very much. And for her final report of nine years, Mrs. Carolyn, Policy and Governance Committee.
Thank you, Beth. Policy and Governance Committee met yesterday at 7:30 in this room. No one was public for the public, or no one was present for the public forum. The committee reviewed Policy 5610, Suspension and Expulsion, which returned after the March meeting with additional requested language. We also reviewed Policy 8700 regarding lactating employees, which returned with additional recommended language to match the legal obligation created by federal law. The committee then reviewed eight policies with updates from the Office of Management and Budget, OMB for short, to incorporate statutory requirements and administration priorities, reduce agency and recipient burden, clarify sections that have been interpreted in different ways, and rewrite applicable sections in plain language to improve flow and address inconsistent use of terms. Six additional policies were reviewed as part of the Niola policy update. 8540 vending machines, 8550 competitive food sales, 8600 transportation, 8640 transportation for field and other district-sponsored trips, 8660 transportation by private vehicle, 8680 transportation service contracts. Three of the six policies will move to the full board for approval on May 14th. Policies returning for additional discussion at committee level before the board approves include 8540 regarding vending machines, 8550 regarding competitive food sales, and 8660 transportation by private vehicle. The committee was also informed of a language change to an administrative guideline related to educator licensing. The committee does not need to approve administrative guideline language, but agreed with the update and then requested a review of Policy 3125 regarding educator licensing. The committee then reviewed Policies 7250, naming and district facilities at the request of a board member. The committee made no changes to the language of the policy, but requested a committee be formed to review the policy and compare with other like-sized districts for potential updates. Drew Nihans will also provide policy information on sponsorship policies at a future committee meeting for review. I have, this is a one-page summary that Sherri put together, and I am so grateful because the other version that we have is four pages. So a full list of policies and minutes can be found on the district website. The meeting adjourned at 8:33, and the next meeting of the committee has yet to be determined as board reorganization and committee structure will be set for the meeting on April 28, 2025. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are now moving into public forum. The first public forum we have is a gender-related public forum. We have three speakers tonight. Clearly state your name, the city you reside in, and the topic you wish to address. If you are acting as a spokesperson for a particular group, please indicate the group you represent. State clearly and concisely your matter of concern, and your time limit is three minutes. Remember, the use of specific names of district personnel may lead to legal liability. Lakeisha. Number one.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So, okay. I actually prepared a space, prepared what I would say so that I wouldn't go over three minutes.
Can you state your name and the city you reside in, please?
Yes. Lakeisha Hayes, Oshkosh.
Thank you.
I have watched enough school board meetings to know that the challenge to CKLA will come from those demanding numbers. And I get it. Data has its place. I understand that data, metrics, and numbers matter. They guide decisions, measure progress, or even the lack thereof. But tonight, I ask each of you to pause and consider. Consider this. What are those numbers incapable of telling us? There are things in education, just like in life, that are immeasurable, profound and deeply human. As a mother, you could ask me, how much do you love your children? And I can never give you a number because there's no chart that could capture how my heart swells when I see them learn something new, or the lump in my throat when I watch them struggle. No graph could represent the tears I've cried when they've been hurt, or the pure joy I've felt when they've triumphed. And yet, that love, the connection, is the most real thing in my world. And it's similar in education. CKLA doesn't just deliver content. It's a key that opens doors. It sparks light in children who've never before seen themselves as readers. It connects kids to text, but not just that, but to each other, to ideas, wonder, creativity, and imagination. But if we only ask ourselves, what do the numbers say? Then we risk missing the bigger story. The one that plays out in classrooms every single day. The one that plays out in our children's lives, the ones that play out in the community. The bigger story involves the look on a child's face when they finally get it. The confidence that builds slowly over time. The voice that grows stronger because a book helps a child feel seen. You cannot chart how a student straightens their back with pride after reading aloud for the first time. You cannot chart the confidence that builds over time when a child can read without hesitation, without stumbling. And you definitely can't put a number on the pride and confidence that a child feels when they're able to raise their hand in front of their peers and read out loud with And I've experienced that personally. I have two children here in the district. I have a son who's in fifth grade, and, is it really over already? I was just getting there! I was just getting there!
Why don't you make your final comment?
Okay, so just as, you know, with my children not being able to chart those experiences and the personal experiences that I've had with my children, they've had that excitement. They brought that learning home to them and they've been able to speak to me about CKLA. And for my fifth grader, it has been speaking to me about CKLA in the same way and with the same passion that he speaks to me about science and math. And when I tell him the history of the curriculum in this district, or again, I say "the lack thereof," and I tell him exactly who led that and the background scenes, and I tell him how it was Dr. Coleman, and I show him a picture of Dr. Coleman, and that representation along with seeing himself in literacy is huge in my household. And I can't put a number on it. I simply cannot. It is absolutely impossible. It's immeasurable. And so to have that and my child to connect that and to have representation at the same time is huge. And so when we've had this district, and we know historically, this district has put in a lot of effort and time to strive for excellence. And this is part of it. And it's not going to be measurable. Every single point of it will not be measurable, but every single time that you look at data points, you should remember that these are children. This is not just a numbers game. It's human. And we have such an amazing momentum going right now with CKLA. It's amazing. And it's hopeful. And the children deserve that, the community deserves it, deserves it, and teachers deserve it. And so I am urging you, I'm imploring you, to approve CKLA so that we don't lose this momentum, we don't lose the hope.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Carmen Scott, Ashkosh. I am here to tilt at windmills to address the superintendent's contract. I know it's a futile effort. I know I don't matter. I know our community doesn't matter. There is a reason why the referendum vote was so close and there is a reason why we do not trust our school district and our administrator. He's up for a raise. Let me get this straight. And my numbers might be wrong because I did Google information and I wasn't in these meetings, but his current base salary is $230,000. His, there's $91,074 in benefits, so he's making in total $321,074 per year, which is higher than the majority of superintendents. So for this significant amount of money, our schools are continuing to fail. I know it is a long-term effort. It doesn't happen overnight, yada, yada, yada. However, teachers are leaving, families are doing what's needed to get out of the school district. The nightmare on Jackson Street is still the number one news story when it comes to our district. And he managed to blow $1.2 million and only recently learned to say the words, "I'm sorry," which I don't even begin to believe he really means. It was just good optics during the referendum campaign. As the top administrator, every single thing I detailed and more is on his shoulders and he is failing miserably. And yet he deserves a raise. I say he should be paying back the $1.2 million he pissed away. If we add in the 35 people within our district making over $100,000 per year as their base salary, not even including all the things that go with that, that's nearly $4 million just on administrative personnel in a district with fewer than 10,000 students. I had lots of comments that people sent me that are staff, that are teachers saying, "Please share this." I don't feel safe. I feel like there could be retribution if my name is attached to any comments whatsoever. But I'm not going to spend precious time sharing those thoughts because it won't matter. We don't believe, we don't trust. We appear to have a rubber stamp board with a majority who have no spine, no common sense, or both. I'm here as a former educator and a community volunteer. I know that strong schools make strong communities. Our schools are an utter disgrace and all the shiny buildings or overpaid administrators do not matter when Johnny can't read, he can't write, and he can't do math. But I'm also here to honor my sister, a former public school educator who was awarded the state of Texas Teacher of the Year twice in her illustrious career. I should be at home waiting for the phone call telling me that her husband has passed away from the serious concerns of his health. He's in the hospital right now. But I believe enough in our schools that I will not give up hope and I will not quit fighting because I know it matters. I'm here to honor her, to honor our children, and yes, we have glorious successes and we've detailed those. And I am not disputing that great things do happen. Kareem does rise to the top. But I know that we as a community, a significant number of people in our community do not believe our schools are working. They're not going to help our community.
Carmen, I asked you to finish up.
So I'm gonna leave, find out when the funeral will be, and hope that this evening is not the death of our schools.
And our last agenda-related public speaker is Catalina Pulcini. Did I pronounce that okay?
No worries. Good afternoon. I am Catalina. I live in Ashkosh and I have currently children present and going to school, third and fifth grade. First, I would like to clearly understand why is the superintendent receiving a raise? I know of children in third grade that do not know how to read. That's a reflection of the dire needs some schools have in regards to education. Secondly, kids are subjected to terrible lunch menus to include frozen, uncrustable, among other non-nutritional items, which by the way, are full of sugar and zero nutritional value to growing children. Their meals are cold by the time they're delivered. School doesn't have equipment to maintain it warm. Third, we had to fight tooth and nail to get some air conditioner in some of the schools. It was easy to just add those expense to the referendum, lack of care for taxpayers, which by the way, pays your salaries. Fourth, he has not taken responsibility on wasting over a million dollars in purchasing homes that can't be utilized. In a private company, he will be fired. These are some of the examples of the lack of leadership, accountability, and lack of cares he has demonstrated. How can a raise be justified? That money could be used for needs of our kids. What about teachers? Yes, they deserve a raise. They work hard and devote themselves to teaching our kids. It will be a shame on the board if his raise is approved. Don't forget that all of your work for the people, that you guys work for the people, not the other way. You are our representation. If you go against our wants, then you're not deserving of that position. You should be making a positive impact, impact for our children, not continue to disregard them. So I really hope you guys make the right decision not to give him the raise.
Thank you very much. Okay, tonight we have non-agenda, we have four people for our non-agenda-related public forum. The rules are the same. Our first one is Addison Butt.
Hello, I'm Addison Butt. I live in Ashkosh and I'm speaking on Excel and Excel students. I'm a sophomore at West High School in the Excel Academy. I'm gonna start by explaining what Excel is. Excel is a program that helps students learn, that learn in a different way. The teachers are, always stress that we aren't stupid and we just learn differently, like everyone else. Excel is taught in two groups or two sessions. The two teachers per classroom. And Excel is made up of four teachers, just enough to cover the four main topics. Science, math, social studies/history, and English. Excel is more project-based learning. Instead of, instead of a test, we search, we research a historical topic in history and instead of a test in science, we do a lab. That also applies for more, oh, sorry, normal lessons that the teachers handcraft. Another important aspect of Excel is the relationships between the teachers and students. If you ask every student in Excel and previous, previous students that were in Excel, we all say it's like a big family. The teachers truly care for us and will cry with us or come for us whenever. Again, if you ask any student that is in Excel or that has graduated from Excel, we would all say the teachers truly care for us. With these relationships and strong bonds, it helps kids ask for help and motivates students to do their work. Personally, when I was in middle school and classes outside of Excel, I hated asking questions and even asking for help. And I thought the teachers would think I'm stupid or dumb even for asking this question. In Excel, I could never feel stupid. The teachers make me feel safe enough to ask questions and help me and talk through the questions I ask. Also, if students having, are having a hard time in their personal lives, they feel more open to tell, tell the teachers about it. Now, I'm gonna get to the point. Excel is shutting down. A program that helps kids that are struggling and that get handpicked for this program is getting dismantled. No one has told me why. I've been emailing admin in my school and no one has given me a clear answer why they're doing this harmful decision thing to West High School. I've talked to other students about it and we have our speculation, but no one has given me a clear answer. The most common response is, "Excel isn't going away, it's just changing." Going from four teachers to one case manager seems like a huge dismantling of the program instead of a simple revamp. Going from a co-taught and co-planned curriculum that focuses on classroom setting will significantly harm student success rates. In fact, many students who have found their place in Excel might just stop showing up to school altogether. With the connections of Excel teachers to students, it helps them pay attention to lessons more and personalizing the lessons to students so they can stay more engaged. The teachers listen to feedback from the students and take that into consideration whilst making lessons that fit the curriculum and standards for our grade levels. This is one aspect of Excel that can never be repeated in any other classroom. Many kids are furious with Excel getting shut down. But one point that makes a lot of people, a lot of students at West upset that hear about this is there's another program called Global Academy that is similar to Excel. Global is made up of seven teachers compared to Excel's four teachers. Global's Academy, Global Academy offers AP and honors classes and it has a much higher budget for the students. I cannot speak on Global Academy completely since I'm not in it. But I will list the facts. Global Academy is for higher-level students and is not made to help students necessarily, but to push their limits academically. Excel is a program that helps teachers build connections with students that are struggling and to help them guide them through their first two years of high school and be later supports on their later years of high school. As of now, they are keeping Global Academy with little to no changes while they are dis, while they are dismantling Excel. Let me break this down more. The administration is keeping a similar program to Excel, but it helps push their students and not help them. But the same administration is getting rid of a program that helps students and fosters a comfortable, safe, and judgment-free environment to better help students that are struggling and provides support for students in their first years of high school. This is upsetting many kids and staff at West and as it should. Excel is truly an amazing program at West and the teachers do their best with the nonexistent budget they have. Even with these challenges, the teachers in Excel handcraft amazing, hands-on lessons to help kids not only understand, but apply what they are teaching. If Global Academy kids want to go on a field trip, they can just use their money.
We're gonna have to have you wrap up as well.
Okay. I'll just skip to my closing remarks then.
Thank you.
This seems to me, West High School doesn't care for their students as they preach and only cares if you want to get smarter. The kids in Excel do want to get smarter and learn, but they can't learn in classrooms since they can't understand or apply what they are getting taught. I come to you asking to please reconsider this detrimental decision and help us save Excel, not only for myself and my peers, but for the future generations who would benefit from this program.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Amaya Thomas and I'm from Ashkosh. As Addison talked about Excel, as a whole, I'm gonna talk about my personal experience with Excel. I'm a person that came from going, I moved here when I was in fourth grade and I didn't have the best experiences with teachers or my peers or, you know, administrative. So when I got to Ashkosh West, my freshman year, I was put in Excel and they kinda changed my whole viewpoint on a lot of teachers and peers and stuff. They gave me opportunities that I never thought I would ever do. My grades are better than I ever thought it would ever be. Like, I'd never passed like math or science, like barely passed with like a D minus in middle school. But when I got to high school and I got to Excel, obviously it was a different environment and, you know, I thrived right when I got in there. The teachers, they helped me on personal levels, home situations, school situations. They, you know, gave me a place. It's like my second home. And when I heard that it was being taken away, I like started panicking because, you know, that's like my home, that's my family. Those teachers, you know, work very hard to create one-on-one relationships with their students, each one of their students. And they have over, what, 40 students? And that's a lot. That's a lot of kids to be handling. But, you know, they never gave up on us. There's days that's harder than other days, but never once did they think, "I couldn't do this." They fought that much harder and they teach us to fight that much harder. There's been very situation, like a lot of situations that I've been in that helped, Excel has helped me with, my communication. I never would have been in front of all these people speaking. That's scary, but, you know, they helped me with that. My academics, they helped me with that. I started my own club freshman year, Black Student Union. I never thought I would have did that. Like, that's crazy, okay? But I started that. They, you know, showed me that there's so much more to life and just don't give up. And so it really hurts that, you know, Excel is kinda ending and like Addison said, I really hope that you guys reconsider getting rid of Excel and, you know, maybe trying different approaches to fix it if there's an issue with it. Maybe even getting student representatives. We got a great team up here, you know, to share what we could do better. What can the teachers do better instead of taking it away? Because this is home for so many kids that might not have home outside of school or might not know a home outside of school. So, I know I gotta go, guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Shannon Dreaser?
Dreaser?
Dre, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
It's an L, sorry.
I'm Shannon and I'm from Ashkosh. I live here on occasion and I'm here to talk about my personal experience about being in Excel. I am a previous Excel student. When I started high school as a freshman, I was so scared. But when I went into Excel and met my teacher, I realized that it's okay to be scared on your first year of high school. When I had gotten into Excel, I was able to get the help that I needed and I wasn't struggling anymore. I was able to understand what I was doing and learning and getting the help that I needed when I was, when I was struggling. Excel has helped me in so many ways. They've helped me become more social just by having fun activities and doing hands-on group projects. They've also helped me get better at my emotions by showing me that I wasn't gonna be alone and I was actually gonna be able to meet people. And they also allowed me to talk about my feelings when I needed it and helped me get the resources. They also have helped me by getting my job and I've had my job for almost over a year actually, just by them having, helping me with my resume and doing mock interviews to help me prepare for that job interview that I had. Before I had started high school, I was worried about how I was gonna able, be able to catch up on my learning because in middle school, I had done virtual during my seventh grade. And when I, that year, I, me and my family found out that my mom had cancer. And because I was doing virtual, it had affected me in a way that I just thought I couldn't focus and it took a huger toll on me for my school, so I was struggling more. And then closer to the end of seventh grade, I had lost my mom to cancer. So I was worried about how I was gonna be able to catch up on my schoolwork. But thanks to Excel, I was able to get that help that I needed for me to be able to understand what I didn't learn between seventh and eighth grade. So I was really like happy that I was like, hey, it's okay to ask for help. Like, you're gonna be able to catch up on your learning. And even when they noticed that I was zoned out or wasn't paying attention, they were able able to get my attention and help me where I, what I missed for that lesson so I could understand where I was at again. They're also always there to talk to someone and help someone that's even outside of Excel, but it also has helped a lot of students in and outside of Excel. They're there no matter what it is. If you even have a hard day or a bad day or whatever, they're always there to help make out your mood so much better. I was also just worried as a freshman because my grades were so bad, but thanks to Excel, I've had that resources to help me get to where I'm at now and I've taken a huge jump. I can finally understand. So, to finish up my thoughts, I would like to say, please take this into consideration about not shutting down Excel because Excel has take likely, will take, likely take a huge toll on students that are starting high school that didn't get the help that they needed in middle school and need support, understanding what they didn't fully learn so they can be successful later in high school. Also, not having Excel will likely affect students that need help understanding the reasons for resumes and doing a mock interview to help them prepare for a job interview, which can also affect the percentage of students getting a job because they won't be able to get that help to prepare for a job. Overall, Excel has helped Oshkosh West academically and shutting down Excel will likely affect West academically. Excel has helped a lot of students and that shutting down Excel will likely affect students because Excel has helped students to get where they are now and will continue to grow because they now understand things that they didn't understand before. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. And our final speaker is Mike Krieger.
Mike Krieger, I'm from Oshkosh. I came here tonight. I met Shannon last Saturday at a rally downtown. She came up to me and a friend of mine, I go to rallies all the time. She came across the street, she picked us out, she came up and talked to us, told us her whole story. Told me she was coming here tonight. I said, "I'll be there to support you." What a super-strong, powerful girl. All of you, great, amazing. I tried to do some research. What is OASD, OASD's explanation for why Excel is getting shut down?
We can't, we can't have a dialogue during public, but if you want to come to the next listening session, we'd be happy to do it then.
I'm not sure if it's because of the horribleness that's going on in the federal government right now. I'm guessing that's a big part of it, but it's everyone's responsibility. The children are only, only big concern in life should be the children, our children, everyone's children. The safe upbringing, the fact that they have somewhere to go in a time of need that they can't get at home. And that's being taken away from them and they just explained it to us how important it is in their life. We're only ninety-three days into this new administration and what's coming ahead? The hundred and thirty-plus executive orders, thirty-six-plus memorandums, thirty-six-plus proposals. They're big items that have five words associated, too many signs them, but the nuts and bolts, there's thousands and thousands and thousands of people that are gonna be affected by every one of those in a horrible way. And hopefully, the school district can get ahead of that and figure out what to do. Education importantly, but protecting the lives of these kids, making sure that they have someone to talk to, somewhere to go, somewhere to get a meal, somewhere to get a jacket or whatever they need. A box of diapers for their brother or sister at home that has nothing. Things are gonna get horrible and I just don't know how we as adults have failed so drastically to allow this stuff to happen and it's mostly gonna affect them. They're gonna pay for all of this. All the ignorance that we, the decisions that we made to get to this point, they're gonna pay for it. Putting our fancy houses, fancy cars, fancy yards, fancy clothes, all the stuff that I want for me ahead of them. And that's what we've done. We failed them. I see the public school as one of the greatest things that America put forward, but we failed to put the correct effort into it to make it as great as it could be. Make America great again? Tired of that, but we can at least make the public school system greater.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're moving on to the consent agenda and remember, this will not include number twelve, number seventeen, and number eighteen. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some moved.
Second, Barb.
Aye.
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 Thank you. And now, number twelve.
Excuse me, point of order. Was there another speaker signed up by chance?
No, but I have something on one side. In relation to what they have said.
Okay. I don't think we can because you needed to be signed up before we, before we got through the public forum. What would you like to say?
My name is Delaney. I live in Oshkosh.
Delaney, what's your last name?
Ryan Hart. Um, sorry, I'm really nervous.
That's okay.
This is a huge deal to me.
Yeah.
I'm a member of AP US History at Oshkosh West and the English Honors Two Program. I'm a sophomore. I may not be part of Excel, but I know that this is very important to them. And I know some of the reasons why some teachers might be getting rid of it because freshmen, so sorry.
It's okay.
I'm really nervous.
It's okay. Breathe.
Freshmen have been making issues in Excel because they don't pay attention enough. However, there are new people in eighth grade coming to high school who need Excel. And freshmen who are currently actually paying attention need, are being taught sophomore like curriculum. So, if they go into sophomore year without Excel, they will already know the curriculum and they can't switch their schedules now. And sophomores now really appreciate all the teachers that have been there. And even though I'm a part of the smarter and more advanced placement programs, I still think it's very important that we have like people who learn at a slower pace don't get this amount of help that we do. Thanks.
Thank you.
Very welcome.
That took courage. That was great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we are at number twelve. Is there a motion and a second so we can discuss?
Some moved.
Carolyn?
Second. I got a couple of questions. I'm wondering if Ms. Conrad or Drew, maybe you could help me out here?
Yeah, I think Drew, probably Drew and Sabrina, if you guys could come on up.
Okay.
They would've handled it.
So, reflecting back on last year when we did all of this, and I remember last year, we approved all of the staffing stuff, the end of June. Appreciate why we want to go earlier. That was a little late. But I also remember that last time, when we approved, I think it was when we approved the staff, that also had to come with, I believe it was a twenty instructional staff reduction. And I remember at the time, we heard about the concept of enrollment-driven staffing ratios and I think we had said, you know, when we looked at all the comparable districts, I think Fond du Lac was the closest one and that if we were to go to that, that would require kind of a substantial cut for us in terms of our instructional staff. And it's not something that we wanted to do, but I look at, I look at this report now and I go, "This report says that," Drew, you looked at it and that you believe that it fits into the budget. And so, my question is, you know, I can applaud doing this early, but to some extent, I question, are we, are we doing something now or are we committing to this decision and that may set us up for a struggle for something later? And specifically, what I want to know is there any sense of, are we going to have to reduce more staffing coming up here and we're just not dealing with that now? If by those staffing ratios, it seemed like that's what we were planning on doing, is there any sense that that's what we're gonna end up having to do in the near future here up through June or?
Yeah, so one of the things our team's been working on through this is not only trying to readjust our timing of how we budget and how we do staffing, but really building in what we're doing within that and having better discussions. So, we are, as we go through the staffing process, that process has changed significantly over the last two years. As we've been talking with Dr. Davis and I believe it was mentioned, I'm trying to get a five-year better alignment between not only the budget forecast, which we typically do, I always carry a five-year forecast, really lining that up with true position control, which is something that the district has never had before. We have HRIS system that we're moving to in August that truly allows us to have position control that ties literally to our budget.
Which is a human resource information system.
Yes, sorry. Sorry. Yes, so combining the two, it has helped us. We still are a work in progress as far as rightsizing, staffing FTE to where we want to be. That being said, we also are purposely trying to avoid what is going on in Fond du Lac and some other area schools where you have to make eight million dollar adjustment like in a month. So, we know this is something that has to happen over a three-to-five-year period, so we made progress this year. Building in the CPI increase in the step and lane, which was the direction we got from the board at this time last year is, that was what the, what the want was from the board. Having that understanding from the get-go as I was building a budget has also really helped that process where we aren't in the same situation as we were last year as far as, we went into our budgeting and our staffing process with that expectation. So, we still have work to do, but again, if, what we're trying to do is take this in yearly increments and try to get to our target goal within a three-to-five-year timeframe so it's not as painful in a one-year period.
And I'd also just like to add, Tim, if I can, that our plan last year was to come at this time with these increases. We just had a lot more negotiation meetings to continue with including step or not. So, our plan would've been April last year as well because as you know, we have to have our staff teacher contracts out by May fifteenth, so by allowing us to have it, if it's approved tonight, we can include it in our contracts where last year, it really caused a lot of questions from our teachers thinking that they weren't receiving a raise when they received their contracts.
I mean, we, we just approved the teachers, so we're good there. So, is the plan, like I appreciate that it was kind of a relatively large number. If we were to go to that and there was no intent of instantaneously going to that, to some extent, you know, I appreciate that last year was a unique situation. We had to make a cut to fit in the budget. You've built it in this year. If we were to, you know, like, if we were to cut down another twenty teachers or instructional staff, we could potentially do something like that through attrition and it wouldn't have to be, is that something that then comes to us or is that just part of overall staffing, part of your staffing ratios? You can just make that happen kind of thing and?
Yeah, part of the staffing process is, allows us to make those decisions. Now, if we had to come after or we were gonna downsize a position that, that misses a truly downsized where it's not an attrition-based, there's actual regulations for the timing of that non-renewal notice and any of that layoff notice kind of situation.
Right. You know, I think my struggle was that, I think last year when we evaluated all these, I think, I think we saw a really in-depth analysis on the teachers. I know we reviewed the paras. I think we did a good job of that and I think where I struggled last year was, I was anticipating seeing more information on the administrative side and we didn't have an administrative compensation committee prior to that and I had resigned myself to the fact that, well, we got a year before we do it again. And then, I think it was on April second of this month, you know, I got an email saying, "Hey, let's schedule the administration compensation committee." And we struggled with that a little bit to find a time that everyone could meet, but I'm again left with this idea that, well, one, the administrative compensation committee, we're not going to schedule it now until after the twenty-eighth when we get the new committees with the new boards seated. But I'm left with, once again, we are considering the administrators without having substantially looked at a large amount of data and we are planning on apparently having that committee meet in the relatively near future. And so, I'm struggling with, why are we voting on this when we have a committee that is supposed to be looking at this stuff that I believe is supposed to be meeting awfully soon? And I get, I get the desire to do this well before July first. I can appreciate why teachers would want to know before they sign contracts. I totally get that. I'm just left with, I feel like before we vote on, and it's unfortunate because I know there's a whole bunch of other non-union groups in here, but I feel like before we vote on the administrators, we should have the administration compensation committee actually meet. And so, I am going to move that we move this to the administration compensation committee before we as a board take this up. So, that is my motion here. Hoping somebody-
One second.
So, just for a discussion, so, so one of the things that I would want to be thoughtful about is that we have administrators right now who are at a particular salary. Part of this move for us was to make sure that they had their cost of living increase, right? And that would be similar to our other employees, to provide them some security and some direction because it is hiring season now. We have very talented principals and administrators in the system. I don't think we want to kind of stagnate them and say, "We're gonna wait a little bit." So, my proposal would be to be able to move forward with what this is asking for tonight and also convene the administrative compensation committee to be able to look at that. That may be a short conversation, that may be a six-month conversation, right? But at least that gives us a safety net to signal to our administrators that they're valued and that that increase is something that they can depend on. And if we decide to make changes to that, then so be it, right? Then we can come back whenever that decision would be made, come back to the board for that approval. But I think it's really important for us to be thoughtful of what that message would send from, to an administrator's standpoint.
Other discussion?
I believe it was Act Ten that, well, we didn't have a second on that.
Yeah, you left a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I will, I have no problem with that. I think, I will second it. I think that, that is a valid point. I think that, you know, we're being asked to vote on something and where a committee hasn't even met or discussed it in well over a year, so I will absolutely second that.
We are giving everyone cost of living adjustments. We understand how inflation has hit our economy. I just recently read a study, and don't quote me exactly, but the cost of just being able to maintain a middle-class family nowadays is exorbitant, right? able to maintain a middle-class family nowadays is exorbitant, right? We are talking about a cost of living adjustment increase that we can do and provide within our budget, within our budget, because we've budgeted well. I don't think that that's a crazy ask to keep competent and qualified administrators in our district and to be proactive about keeping them here instead of allowing them to get poached by other districts. And furthermore, has anyone watched the job market lately? I know some of these numbers sound big. Has anyone seen the UPS salaries that just came out, right? A bunch of friends of mine are UPS workers, strong, hard, blue collar working people, right? They're making easily over 100K now, and you add in their fringe benefits, they're probably in the 200K mark, right? Because now, I guess, part of the discussion today is, we're going to attach everyone's salary with everyone's fringes, right? You do that with mine, my salary goes up a ton. Everyone in this whole room's salary goes up in a ton. And we can present data in any way we want to shed any sort of light on any type of scenario any way we want to. But I don't think cost of living is crazy. And if I'm crazy for thinking that, then so be it. Then the people can do with that what they would like. And I don't think it's crazy to want to keep administrators here. And I don't think it's crazy to want to do this all within a budget that we've planned for, that we can do it within. So those are my thoughts.
And with all due respect, Chris, I don't think that it's a crazy ask for the committee to meet.
I respect that.
I guess my question is, what is the benefit? What are we expecting the outcome of a committee meeting to be? Why, are we going to revisit the number? Like, what's the benefit in waiting to do this?
I think, looking at it, all of the other committees have met. I don't understand why this one has not. That's my thought.
I know, excuse me, I know there was difficulty getting a date with the members of the administrative compensation committee. Whatever dates were thrown out, you couldn't get a forum, and so they haven't met.
I just think it's a, we have a committee to look at this information. They were intending on meeting. I agree with Dr. Herzog, that's what happened, that we couldn't get everybody together. And I just go, does it really hurt to try to get the committee together sometime in hopes that we could revisit this at the first board meeting in May? But at least have had an opportunity to carefully evaluate what are the salary ranges that we're looking at and can we look at anything comparable?
I don't think we're talking salary ranges. I think for this group, we're talking about CPI.
I get that, but that's a CPI added onto their base salary. And the question is, are their base salaries reasonable? I concur.
I don't think that is the question.
That's not the question.
That is their salaries. I don't think that the committee has any authority to decrease their salaries.
Well, no, but you would have the authority to not go up to full CPI if we find that it's way out of line. I don't think it's going to be. But I'm also left with, for a year now, we had an opportunity to look at this, and we haven't seen any data to suggest that we are in line. I suspect we are, but I just feel like as a board, before we make decisions, I want to know that we're well in line.
I guess I'd just encourage each board member to take control of your position in the future. I know it's a challenge for me, but I'm doing as much as I can on the policy and governance committee to do this. If you're seeing something that you don't like, try and get that meeting scheduled earlier. I don't care if you're the chair. It's all on us as a board to make that happen. And if we fail to do that here, that's on us. And a CPI increase is the minimum that we can expect, and we are very lucky to be able to provide it to our food service, paraprofessionals, admin, and other non-exempt, general exempt employees.
I would say that's what we're trying to do here, is get the meeting scheduled.
Well, you had 11 months.
Prior to a vote.
Okay. I think we can probably wrap this up unless someone has a different viewpoint. Okay, we have, Dr. Herzog.
I believe the Consumer Price Index or CPI has been the basis of salaries going back to Act 10, which I believe was passed about 10 years ago. And this district historically has done their best to provide that, those salary increases at the CPI level. I don't think there's anything in writing, I don't think we had a policy that said that, but that was what the board attempted to do, recognizing that salaries fall farther and farther behind and it's more difficult to attract people. I just saw some data this week from the Department of Public Instruction showing that the number of people going into administrative roles, the historic route, which is through a graduate degree, is decreasing across the state. And so I also note that the next meeting of this board is not scheduled until May 14th, which is the first, excuse me, the second meeting, second Tuesday, second Wednesday in May. When did you say the contracts need to go out to the people?
The teacher contracts have been approved. So those need to be out by May 15th statutorily.
I respect the notion that I would have loved to have had this committee meet prior to this date. I don't, I don't expect that it would be in the best interest of our administrative team nor of this district if we were to suggest that we were to give them less than the CPI increase or less than what we would do for other employee groups. It's possible that that group would talk about perhaps some fringe benefits, but we're not talking fringe benefits tonight. We're just talking salaries. So I don't see a problem approving this tonight. I hate, I would hate to see our losing qualified professionals to other districts because a committee didn't meet, because we couldn't get our act together.
So can I just ask point of order of how it works with, because I haven't done this very often, when there are amendments?
We have to.
We'll vote on.
We'll vote on the amendment, and then we'll go back to the original.
Okay, thank you.
Are we ready for the vote?
Yes, and this is on the amendment.
This is on the motion to hold this Resolution 12 until after the administrative compensation committee meeting.
Can we be clear on what a yes vote is and what a no vote is?
A yes would be holding it until after. A no vote would be voting tonight.
Coming back to the original question.
Original question, yes.
Coming back to the original question.
So, Herzog.
No.
Hess.
Aye.
Smutley.
No.
Wright.
No.
Wyman.
No.
Carlin.
Nope.
Dewitt.
Aye.
Motion fails.
Okay, so we're back to number 12, and we do have a motion and a second on that, correct?
Correct. Carlin is the motion, Hess is the second.
Okay. Call the roll.
Hess.
No.
Smutley.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carlin.
Aye.
Dewitt.
No.
Herzog.
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to number 17. Is there a motion?
Can we keep you guys here, please? It'll be, this will be much quicker.
Is there a motion for 17?
I'll move.
Second. Hess. Carlin. Discussion.
So I asked to have this one pulled too. I think my question is, that we note in this that the step movement makes it such that approximately, teachers are at 4.5%, approximately across the entire group, all these different groups, that this turns out to be 4% roughly. Is that different amongst the different groups, like food service, paras, administrators, general non-exempt? And if it is, are there any of those groups that are literally getting nothing from a step movement? Are there some groups that just don't have step and we're not giving them anything or?
No, every group gets, so if you're on a, if you're a work group that has a matrix, a salary matrix, the matrix is built where there's increases per step. So that got negotiated out. Most of those have been longstanding since pre-Act 10. They just get updated. There are non-unionized, traditional non-unionized groups that a number of years ago, the school board approved a flat dollar amount to act as a step. So we've got non-exempt group that they just get a flat dollar amount instead of, because they're not on a matrix, just the way that's all different kind of categories of employees. So they get that flat dollar amount. But everyone gets something that would be part of that. Now, the, a large part of that difference that you're going to see is the teacher union group has a larger step in between, a larger dollar amount associated with each of their steps than the other work groups or the people without a matrix that have a dollar amount stipend. That comes in a smaller percentage overall, just the way it was created.
And would it be fair to say that of all these groups, the largest one, the one who would get the largest overall increase is going to be at the 4.5? Is that?
Yeah, the teachers group.
Well, but this one's talking specifically of all the non-union groups that, we're saying, when you divide across all the groups, so food service, employee, paraprofessionals, administrators, you divide across all of them, it's 4%. But is there any group that's getting above the 4.5% or?
Yeah, I believe OEA is getting the largest overall. When you combine their CPI increase plus their step increase, I believe their percentage is the highest.
At 4.5?
It's around that, yes. It's close to that. All the rest of the groups are closer to the 4% mark.
I mean, I think we got to be transparent to all the different groups, what they're getting. So I just struggle when we average across a bunch of different groups. But if we're not going to wait on the CPI increase, then I don't really feel compelled to wait on this either, so.
Yeah, I will mention off of that, since we're talking about it, in negotiations with the NTEA groups specifically, they did ask for us to do a study and to come back on their matrix itself and to see if we can do some work on that. So that is something that Mrs. Johnson and I will be looking at and working with them on. Do we need to add steps to their matrix? Do we have to look at the dollar amount gap in between theirs? Theirs is not very favorable to the employees, just the way it's structured. So that is something we will be studying and looking at specifically with that group. They had specifically requested that within our negotiation.
And taking a look at that for next year?
Yes, correct. Yeah, not for this year. They agreed that it was, I mean, it was too late for this year, and we knew we didn't have extra wiggle room within the budget right now, and it's going to take time to agree to what that's going to look like.
Is this a similar process that you went through with the paraprofessionals when you talked to outside districts to see what they were paying and when, tried to be comparable?
The analysis was looking at each of their essential functions compared to their titles along with their starting salaries. So that actually will be coming forward next month, as the NTEA is the group that we studied this year. So the matrix is separate from that.
Okay, thank you.
Can I add that I'm proud of what the district's doing to increase wages for all of our groups? Because we didn't historically always, you know, provide as much compensation as we should have to some of our representative groups. And we've had long conversations about that. And I'm just happy, you know, that individuals that are doing a lot of the, you know, the grunt work and the hard labor within our community or within our school district are able to see some of these increases like they should. So, thank you guys for your work on that.
Thank you for.
And the groups were all very happy and pleased to be recognized with this cost of living increase, because that makes them feel good too, like they're providing value. So, thank you.
Thank you. We okay to call the vote?
Smutley.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carlin.
Aye.
Dewitt.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Okay, 18, superintendent contract. Motion and a second, please.
It's a moved.
Second. Carlin. Dewitt.
I asked to have this pulled, so I guess I will talk about it. You know, again, I think to me, this aligns again with administration compensation. I feel like we should be looking very closely at things. And I have gone and looked at the 20 largest school districts in the state, starting from Milwaukee, the 20th largest goes down to Nina. And when I look at overall compensations, I can say that the superintendent in Oshkosh is third, only to Milwaukee and Madison. And then I also looked at, well, what if I take those districts that are closest in size to us? And so I went five above and five below, and that meant the largest was Appleton at 15,000, and the smallest was Stevens Point at 9,000. We're at roughly nine, or I'm sorry, 7,000 Stevens Point, where we're at roughly 9,000. And of that group of 11 total districts, our superintendent in terms of overall compensation is number one, and that is by over $30,000. Now admittedly, that compensation is the 23, 24 school year. I struggle because I know in two weeks, the DPI is going to be releasing this year's data, and I feel like we should be looking at that. But this tells me everything that I feel like I really need to know on this. And so I go back and I look at all the things that I have observed this year. And I look at, for example, last month, we were looking at the strategic plan and the key performance indicators. And of all of those, we had two of them that increased by one star, and we had three of them that went down. And I'm left with, well, that isn't, that isn't getting us somewhere. In terms of academic achievement, you know, during the referendum, we heard that the big pitch was that we increased by a little over 4% over three years in English language arts. But then I'm also reminded of the fact that a little over three years ago, that baseline point was the all-time low after COVID. And I would say that board policy suggests that we should be increasing, that the goal was to increase by 5% per year for all those three years. So I'm comparing that little over 4% to 15% goal. In math, effectively, we have stayed utterly the same, and that now means that our math achievement is actually lower than English language arts. We've got disparities that we've been saying that we're going to work on, both in academics and suspensions, and those disparities have only gotten worse. I concede, while I wasn't a proponent of the referendum, the board did ask to go to referendum, and I concede, the superintendent made that happen. And I appreciate that we're accomplishing goals to some extent that the board asked for. Where I'm struggling though is that I feel like in this scenario where many of the goals that we want to achieve in terms of academic achievement aren't happening, I struggle with going above and beyond the 4.5% that is kind of the typical or what the teachers are getting. And so I don't understand why we want to do more than that. We are talking about increasing a tax shelter annuity annually from 24,000 to 31,000. We are proposing here to pay 75% of the Wisconsin retirement system, where typically everyone who gets that gets 50% paid. So that increase results in an additional $8,500. And that means in total, we're looking at providing roughly $56,000 into a retirement system. I just, I feel like when I look at the comparables, that our superintendent is getting an extraordinary salary. And in return, when I look at the main objectives that we have in terms of achievement, I'm not seeing something. achievement, I'm not seeing something that then deserves what I would call, in this case, an extraordinary raise. And so I'm struggling with this. You know, we talk about accountability, and it seems like, I've heard people talk about, because we put goals into board policy, that that's accountability. And I would say, I would contend that accountability is what happens after we see whether somebody achieves those goals or don't, does not achieve those goals. And so I look at this and feel like what we are telling the community is, we value building new schools, and that to a great extent, academic achievement, we say it's an important thing, but we're willing to give an extraordinary raise when we're not seeing the gains in academic achievement. We're not seeing the reduction of disparities. And so for all of those reasons, I cannot support a proposed superintendent's contract.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Mrs. Smutley?
Um, I, I think I have, I mean, well, you all know I like to write stuff, so it is my intent, and I believe it's the intent of our Board of Education, to continue to build a local public education system that centered in excellence, rigor, and engagement. When hiring Dr. Davis, the board sought a leader with experience in building positive staff culture, strong community involvement, and equitable student growth and achievement. I believe we are, we are on a good path in those areas, and as long as I'm on the board and he is our superintendent, I will hold him accountable to making that progress. I've emphasized publicly and in private discussions with Dr. Davis that I expect improved educational outcomes, continued staff engagement and retention, proactive facilities planning, accountability in decisions and actions, and transparent communications with all stakeholders. I believe other board members share these same priorities and expectation. The board must continue to hold Dr. Davis accountable to district priorities and student outcomes formally in his semi-annual evaluation process, and I expect that future evaluations will be done in conjunction with contract negotiations. But we have to look at what has been done over the last couple of years here in OASD. Our school district staff engagement is currently at 54%. That's 23% higher than the average of companies that engage in that same employee survey. I'm incredibly thankful to Oshkosh area school district voters who recently passed the facilities referendum and allowing us to keep working on our long-range facilities master plan and getting some air conditioning into some of these schools. This was not a perfect practice, I reckon, and a process, it most definitely was not, but it passed, and I strongly believe it is in the best interest of our students and our taxpayers. Over 40% of referendums statewide did not pass this spring, and under the leadership of Dr. Davis, ours did. The next point is that over the last year, I can't wait to talk about more about this tonight, our district has engaged in a comprehensive K5 literacy curriculum review and adopted a science of reading-based K5 literacy curriculum as a field test and hopefully tonight, district-wide. We are actively engaging in the comprehensive teacher training and working to increase student achievement. This happened under Dr. Davis's leadership. If nothing else, he got people out of the way, and he got out of the way. He allowed and facilitated this change when two previous superintendents, since I have been fighting for it, did not. He put our students first, and he put the staff in place to lead this massive effort, and he is supporting an absolute 180-degree turn. These are the first steps in a very long journey, but our kids are going to learn to read. And I think continuity of leadership encourages the long-term strategic planning for progress on academic achievement and best serves our students. Dr. Davis has over 15 years of experience as a superintendent of Columbus School District, Shore School District, and now Arton School District for the last four years. While other districts, large districts in our state, are hiring leaders who have never held to have any superintendent experience. Dr. Davis has served our district for four years, and I hope that we can continue on the path with him to get these things done that we have started. I could easily justify a new contract for him and these, whatever, however Tim worded it, the massive increases, based on the concept that he is the CEO of an organization. This organization, OASD, is making good forward progress, and that is led by Dr. Davis. And unfortunately, the reality in our world is that compensation is not fair across organizations. You have to pay a premium for leadership and continuity. Is that fair? Is that servant leadership? Not necessarily, but we want to lock down solid, experienced leadership, and that is in the best interest of our students and stakeholders. There are things that I contemplated going no on this. I think we can do better on transparency with all board members and on this process. I think we need to work on eliminating that icky feeling that many in our community feel about this. We need to change how we communicate. We need to make a better negotiation process that ingrains accountability, and we have to increase parity and showing respect for all of our staff members. I'm so incredibly excited that we are doing pay raises for all staff in this current economic environment, and we must continue to show that we value them all. In the future, I hope that we make this process even better, and I will be fighting for that. And I offered changes along the way and worked hard to try to get the best outcome tonight. And I expect, again, that we will do better next time. Ultimately, though, it comes down to the question, do we want to risk losing our CEO? Do we want to start over with a new superintendent? For me, that's an emphatic no, and I think other board members agree with me on that. I have very high expectations of Dr. Davis, much to his chagrin at times, and he very much knows that. I think the board and the individuals on it want to keep Dr. Davis as our leader, and I'm doing my damnedest to hold him and his staff accountable to always put students first. But I'm solution-oriented. I am here to build up and not break down, and I will proudly be part and do my part to serve our students and community. I'll be voting for this renegotiated contract with the expectation that we continue to better, do better. We need to expect stability and excellence in our Oshkosh area school district, and I believe Dr. Davis can lead us there.
Thank you, Mrs. Milton. Mrs. Carolyn?
I don't want to go after Molly. She, she summarized everything that I wanted to say perfectly, but I do have a couple of points that I want to make. I would first like to challenge the validity that Dr. Davis is the third highest-paid superintendent. I do not believe that that is correct information. I also want to note that we are talking about a CPI increase, a cost of living increase. I'd also like to point out that Dr. Davis does not make much more money than his two previous predecessors. Stan Mack and Dr. Vicki Cartwright made, had a salary that was definitely aligned with what we are paying Dr. Davis right now. There was a slight increase perhaps in his salary when we hired him, because let's ask this question, how many people wanted to be a superintendent after COVID? There were not a lot of candidates that wanted to be a superintendent after COVID. So I think that he did get a slightly higher salary than we were paying Dr. Cartwright, but not much. And you can Google that information for the exact numbers. I don't have them tonight. Has Dr. Davis done what we have asked him to do? Yes, we asked him to pass a referendum, and he did. Yes, he has been changing curriculum as we asked him to do. I understand the argument that some of our scores might not be where we want them to be, but if you look at the third grade data, and if you recall during that meeting when they were presenting the third grade data and our scores and our math and literacy scores, I said, what's going on in third grade? Because third grade is just hitting it out of the ballpark. And those third graders were kindergartners when Dr. Davis joined our district. So I will be supporting this increase. It is not an excessive amount. We are talking about a 4.5% increase, which is what we are giving teachers. And I believe that Dr. Davis deserves that for all of his hard work. He has worked incredibly hard for our district, and we have seen some changes that are very impressive, especially with our staff engagement too. It's, that number has just skyrocketed. So I look forward to seeing what Dr. Davis can do in the next few years.
Thank you. Dr. Herzog?
Thank you. I want to first, first of all, begin by thanking Mrs. Smutley for your comments. You, you do a wonderful job of delving into issues and supporting those with true statements, not misinformation or disinformation, and I really appreciate that. I too often have conversations with Dr. Davis indicating that I believe that there are some things that can be done better, and I find that he does listen, and, and so to me, that's one of the points you spoke of in terms of accountability of our superintendent. When I, I don't know where these districts fall in terms of their, the number of students in them, but one of the things that, that I've been proud of in terms of this board is that we tend to come to a, each of us comes to a decision based on information available to us and after, I think, careful study. So we are not a rubber stamp. I'm a taxpayer, everybody around this table is a taxpayer, people in the audience are taxpayers, and I do pay attention to that. At the same time, we often have to invest in, we have to invest in our people, and we've done that with our teachers, we've done that with paraprofessionals, with a great deal of professional development over the years. When I look at surrounding districts, Manasha, Nina, Appleton, Green Bay, Coconna, Fond du Lac, every one of those currently has a superintendent who has less experience than Dr. Davis. In many cases, he has more than 10 years of experience over each and every one of those. The Kimberly District will have a brand-new superintendent in the fall who has no superintendent experience, but does have central office experience. When, when administrators leave, there's not an expectation that the new person coming in will receive a lesser salary than the person who has exited. There's always an expectation that the salary will be larger, and that was true when Dr. Davis came in after Dr. Cartwright. I don't remember the specifics, Mrs. Carolyn, of what that was, but that was an expectation. The pools for superintendent applicants is smaller and smaller. Many districts have, I know a recent district that had one applicant, one applicant. In many situations, there are not more than three, and many of those have no superintendent experience, no central office experience. They might have principal experience, but they don't have experience working with a large community or the overall community, nor do they have experience working with the school board. So I think those are factors for me that I look at. When I look at the fact that we do have KPIs, and we have made progress on some of them, many we have not, you've heard me say at this board table that I believe that we need to do better, we need to do much better when it comes to language arts and numeracy, math, but I also believe that Dr. Davis has what he has defined as we have the right people on the bus, that is, we have the right administrators in place across the district, whether they're at the principal level or the central office level, and not only they, they the right people on the bus, they're in the right seats. And I'm very confident with the work that Dr. Coleman and his team have done over the last three-plus semesters in identifying a language arts curriculum, which will finally get us into the business of, of solid focus on the science of reading, which will give every child a chance to not only learn to read, but to be able to be, be successful in other content areas so that we can have more kids taking advanced courses and not limiting their options in high school and beyond. We've seen and heard of CKLA, Core Knowledge Language Arts, in less than two years. When I've talked with teachers about CKLA, I find an enthusiasm about that. When I headed up the curriculum department, whether we adopted Silver Burdette and Gin or whoever it was, there was not a lot of enthusiasm, I'll tell you, for those names. But I see a difference, I see a big difference with CKLA. I see a difference in parents talking about their kids, talking about the content that their kids are learning in literacy. Literacy doesn't have a content of, in and of itself unless you're talking about learning about literacy. You have to read about something, and the something that they're reading about in CKLA brings in science, and it brings in social studies and history. And so they're learning content that applies across the board. So I've heard many times that administration has plans, and we do, and we've seen them, and you've heard all of us ask questions about what those plans are and how we're going to get there, and that's part of the accountability movement, but I support the work that Dr. Davis has done with some of the hurdles that have been placed in front of him, especially during the, the process leading to the successful passage of a referendum, which will benefit thousands of children, will improve the quality of life in this community, hopefully will allow us to connect better with the business community in terms of attracting more people who want to come and not only work in Oshkosh, but live in Oshkosh. So putting all that together, I will support this contract.
Thank you. Anything else?
I guess I didn't prepare anything. A lot of what I would have said is Ben said. I would like to point out a couple things. Being the superintendent of a large-size school district has to be one of the toughest jobs around, especially in Oshkosh, where we're a divided community on many issues and where the superintendent slash CEO is going to receive the wrath of that on many issues. And we're active board members, so he gets, we're in his ear all the time too, so he gets it from a million different angles. And I think that's why there's so few people that want to become superintendents right now, and that applicant pool is getting small, and it's, let's not lie to ourselves, it's getting small because of our politics, like, and because we've supercharged school boards with, with politics to some degree. And that makes it a very, very tough job. I, I'm going to do what, for our superintendent, what we did for all of our other employee groups, and I'm going to vote tonight to improve the CPI pay raise as well, because really, to me, it's a choice of going backwards or continuing to move forward. And I'm very hopeful. I mean, we're going to hear for, in a little while here about CKLA. Our facilities, we had a bitter fight over the direction of that within our community, and our community decided that we're going to invest more money into facilities than we have ever. And there's tremendous opportunity that'll come along with that. So, and I just want to say thank you for doing a really tough job. None of this is easy. It's not easy being up here. We all feel it. You feel it every day. We'll feel it after this meeting, you know? Someone will be mad about something or whatever, and that's just the price of, the price of trying to lead. When we took over, there was a lot of things to fix, a lot of things. There's, there's less things now. My kids started out in Oakwood. They didn't have doors, you know, on a lot of the classrooms. They didn't have any of that stuff. And the future generation is because of the referendum. The kids didn't have air conditioning in a lot of schools. They're going to, right? That referendum doesn't pass, the kids don't get those things. And I know there's a lot of people mad that kids are going to get those things, but I'm not one of those people. And I'll take all the flak required from anyone on any of these issues, because to me, five to 10 years, people are going to see what this looks like, and I think that if we keep building, they'll look back on it and say, you know, we did a lot of good things. So, thank you, and I'm fully in support of this.
I am in support of this also. I want to say thank you. You have the toughest job in the community, I think, and I'm very, very excited about the future holds for education and also for the partnership with the business community. That relationship's only going to get stronger, and it's going to benefit us in so many ways when we start to see the partnerships that bloom, that are already blooming with our STEM programs and our work programs. That's what makes a community work, is when you're able to share resources and share our students with the community. And I'm very excited about the strides that have been made and will be made in the future.
Ray?
Yes.
Wyman?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Dewitt?
No.
Hes?
No.
Smutley?
Yes.
Resolution carries? Thank you. We now move to our individually considered resolutions. Number 11, approval of CKLA. Twenty-one, what did I say?
Eleven.
Please don't take us back. No, not going back.
Salute.
Okay. We have a...
Okay, we have a...
Second.
Okay.
Sorry, I was...
Hess, Dewitt.
Yeah.
All right, good evening to the board and to our community members. I will be brief because I'll share the mic with some of our incredible educators who have led the work of implementing a vision that I had when I joined this district, and that was transforming what our literacy programming looks like, not just the materials we use to teach students how to read, but the strategies we use and the conditions we create as they learn, the way we build their confidence and the worlds we expose them to through reading. It was a dream and I would say a pretty wild characterization of what I believed, and I talked about in my interview, was possible when the community, the board, and our educators invest in reading in a radical way. And over this past year and even prior to that, when we engaged the community and an opportunity to hear from them about what they want to see in our reading program, what they want to see not just in our achievement results, but in the ways their young people prioritize this reading. And I am absolutely blown away and impressed by how quickly this vision has caught traction. I'm heart-filled with gratitude to all of our educators, our administrators, our school board and our community who supported this vision. And it's important to note that we are in the very early stages of what will be and continue to be a very significant transformation. Tonight you'll hear about what some of the early indicators of that transformation looks like, but it's important for me to say that while I am proud of where we are and what our experiences have been, I also know that we have very much ground ahead of us to cover, and we will do so with the commitment and with the promise in mind that we make our community, and that is, every student in this district has a right to read, and we get up every day and come to the schools with that promise and commitment in mind. So I will hold up my comments, I know we have some teachers who are here tonight as well who have to get up early in the morning, and so I'll also...
So I'm just gonna introduce who's going to be here tonight. We thought we've presented to the education committee, you've been hearing different pieces about CKLA, so we thought it would be best to maybe just get to hear from our educators about their experiences with the program. So tonight we have Cindy Smith, who is a literacy coach at Reed Elementary School, who's gonna talk about pieces especially at the K through third grade level. And then we have Taylor Thomas here, and she is a first-year teacher, and she teams with Leah Leclaire, and they're both at Lakeside Elementary School, and as you know, Olive Lakeside participated in the field study. And then we have Kim Lauten, who is a veteran teacher, who teaches at E. Cook, who will give us some insights from her perspective as well. So we're just going to have them come up and share just a little bit about their experience, so.
Hi, thank you for having us, and it's so exciting to be able to share some of the insights that we've gained this year. This year I've had the opportunity to support grades one and two at Reed Elementary as they field-tested the CKLA curriculum. It has been a joy to watch young learners grow and their enthusiasm for the acquisition of literacy. In support of the science of reading, CKLA provides explicit instruction in the area of phonological awareness, phonics, vocabulary, comprehension, and core knowledge learning in order to expand our students' minds and develop their literacy skills in an all-encompassing way. I personally witnessed immense enthusiasm and engagement, not only in the, in the children but in the teachers. Teachers are empowered through a clear and accessible pacing guide which helps students connect each skill to the next and apply it in their personal reading. Each reader receives their own book which coincides with each unit. They love learning, learning about the characters and all of the events that these characters participate throughout the stories. Decoding is explicitly taught and modeled, which allows the students to access grade-level text on their own or with the appropriate support by the teacher. Sight recognition is the goal of every reader, connecting the sound of language to print. Regular practice ensures development of neural pathways and results in automaticity whereby students can effortlessly process the meaning of text. Students are motivated to read on their own and celebrate their own success as they recognize more and more words throughout their lessons. The CKLA Skills and Knowledge Activity Books provide accountability for all students as they expect it to be, to be complete, the pages that are assigned, which implies that they are all capable and responsible for their learning. No child is left out. Building background knowledge aids the reader in comprehension and is developed through classroom instruction on a daily basis. The regular routines that the CKLA curriculum provides build strong habits in readers as they know what to expect and continue to add to their repertoire of words and knowledge. Vocabulary is a key predictor of reading comprehension. I've enjoyed observing children create actions that match complex vocabulary, and I've had to sub in those classes, too, and make some stuff up myself, in order to remember the meaning of the word. The teachers use those actions to continue to bring that vocabulary into the classrooms as echoes throughout the day. Activities that focus on understanding and constructing sentences are a regular part of this CKLA classroom. Students are encouraged to use complete sentences when answering verbal questions which carry over into their learning, and now they remind their teacher to do the same. Lastly, our students are aware that learning is important and that their teacher will support them each and every day. Because of the predictable routines and endless concept review, readers are given multiple opportunities to put skills into practice as their understanding and awareness increases. Student confidence grows as readers and writers as they demonstrate their ability to give examples of what they know and how they understand the context. They believe they can because we include them all. Their future as young readers and learners looks bright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Taylor Thompson, I am a first-year teacher currently, piloting CKLA in my fourth grade classroom. Coming into the classroom for the first time, I fully expected to be way overwhelmed, especially with literacy and all the moving pieces with that. But CKLA has actually given me a clear, structured path that supports my teaching and my students' learning as well. Everything is laid out from content knowledge to writing, word work, beyond, daily, and that structure has allowed me and others to focus on how we are teaching things rather than spending hours worrying and figuring out what we are teaching. It allows us to differentiate, and we differentiate every single day, and decide what is really best for our students based on that day's learning target and goals. CKLA provides a gateway to highly collaborative practices that allows teachers and students to thrive every day. More importantly, CKLA holds students to high standards. It asks them to think critically, make connections, and engage with rigorous content right from day one. My students are not only building skills, they're building confidence, and they know what's expected of them. They're proud of what they're doing, they're taking ownership and even seeking out topic-related books in the library. As a first-year teacher, I confidently say that CKLA is not only doable, it's empowering to all, it sets us up for success and sets up our students for success as well.
Very good.
Thank you.
My name is Leah Leclaire, and I am Taylor's teaching partner. Olive Lakeside is piloting CKLA, which I was so excited to hear about. I have been teaching in the district since 2005. I've taught first grade, second grade, I was instructional support teacher for math, and then returned back to the classroom to teach fourth grade. And in those 20 years that I've been involved in the district, I am excited to say this is the first time I've taught from a comprehensive literacy curriculum. So for the first time, I am planning, and all of the facets of the literacy instruction that I provide for my students are included within one curriculum, I can go to one teacher manual, I can go to one website. I can prepare for my students by talking with my teaching partner, as she said, and each day looking at, okay, this is where our kids were at yesterday, this is where we're at today, how are we going to best teach this information? Also, for the first time in the 20 years that I've been in the district, I feel like I'm teaching in a global classroom. My students are more aware that they are part of a bigger world than I have ever experienced before. And I have some students who have probably never traveled out of the state of Wisconsin, but now they know where Islam originated. Some of the things that I'm really excited about heading into future years with CKLA is we're already planning wardrobes to go with some of the units, and already looking at how we can immerse the students even further in future years with the curriculum. So I implore the school board to please approve CKLA for the Oshkosh area school district.
Good evening, my name is Kim Lauten, and I am a fifth-grade teacher at Emeline Cook. I have been in the district a long time, too, 25 years this year, so I knew I wanted to be part of this field study for CKLA, I was part of the committee meetings last year, kind of planning, but I didn't know just how much I was gonna love it, until my fifth graders, after two weeks of school, could sit for that entire 90-minute lesson. We were reading, writing, speaking, doing grammar work, and doing language work. Yes, we had to get up and do a little moving and turning and talking, but they were able to do it. I didn't know how I was gonna love it this much until I heard parents telling me that their kids are coming home talking about the Aztecs, or the Incas, or Don Quixote, or Shakespeare. I didn't know I was gonna love it this much until, wow, shoot, one of my students had me crying during our poetry slam. Shoot. Okay, I didn't know I was gonna love it this much until I saw, sorry, until I saw our mid-year I-Ready results. And my newcomer, who started the year with minimal English, grew 419% in literacy. And at the very same time, my highest readers grew 338% and 286%. That never happened before, not like this. You see, CKLA lends itself to the rigor that some of our highest learners have been craving. Right, Molly? I had her kids. And it lends itself to the engagement that some of our neediest kids need. I was skeptical that I was gonna be able to teach with one text for this huge range of fifth-grade learners that I have in my room, but after that first unit, I had no doubt. It can be done, and it can be successful, and it's what the OASD kids need now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and so thank you to all the teachers, and Ryan is here, too. He has been leading the efforts at Lakeside Elementary School as the principal, and so when you have the entire staff doing that, that's a big undertaking, and so thank you for that, and thank you for the teachers are here tonight. If you have specific questions for them, as a, they are here for those questions, and you can see they're very passionate about what they do, they're also very great in their craft. When we talk about the techniques that we are doing around engagement and rigor in our district, you see that when you're in the classrooms about how they are purposely planning for those pieces. So it's, it's an amazing group of people that we have here tonight, so, thank you. And we're here for questions. Mrs. Carlin?
First of all, I almost started crying, too.
Sorry.
I actually teared up. We received a lot of emails in support of this curriculum, and believe it or not, people don't always contact us with good things. More often than not, people are contacting us with complaints, but it was so refreshing to receive so many emails from teachers and parents and people in the community in support of this curriculum. I am not a literacy expert, and so hearing from the parents that love it, the teachers that love it, and the presentation you gave tonight, that makes my job easy, because clearly you guys are doing something right, and this is the right way that we need to proceed. We even had parents speak at board meetings in favor of this. So it's really exciting, and to see a growth in a student 410%, it's amazing, and so is your passion. Thank you.
Molly, this is my last prepared statement for the night. I can't, I can't. This is by far, well, this is what I've been working for a very long time. And simply put, we've been doing literacy wrong in this district for years. We've been doing reading wrong, we've been doing writing wrong, we've been teaching teachers how to teach literacy, reading and writing wrong. So many kids were harmed by this error, so many kids, like mine, didn't learn how to read in this district. To those kids, many of whom are now adults, who our district failed, I am sorry. I hope that after tonight I can finally say that I promise you that we will do better. With the adoption of CKLA, a high-quality, engaging, rigorous, explicit, systematic, science-of-reading-based curriculum, and I've been saying those words for a really long time, and I'm glad that we finally say that they are a curriculum for all of our K-5 students, we are righting a wrong, we are giving students an opportunity instead of struggle. We, this is a much-needed first-order change, and there is so much more that needs to be done. We must support our teachers with professional development and mentoring, teaching practices must change, beliefs must change, we must believe in our kids, and we must believe both our students and staff are capable of thriving in an environment focused on rigor and engagement. But this vote tonight is such an important step to move forward. Thank you to Dr. Davis for facilitating this sea change, for creating the environment that at least made it possible for our students to achieve proficiency. Thank you for making literacy a priority. Thank you to Kim and Linda, who took this on. I know you had to change your thinking, and you had to embrace change. You have led this implementation, and you have made it work, and you have made people excited about this. Thank you to all the staff who have participated in this field study for your willingness to try something new, to learn something new, and thank you for embracing it fully. I know this is very hard work, and I appreciate you all. And Mrs. Lauten, I hope that soon Leila will be replaced as the vocabulary queen of the world based on your students' increased knowledge, but we can hope. Finally, thank you to you, Dr. Sam Coleman, for your leadership on this journey. For so many years, parents like myself were ignored or discounted by so many people in leadership in this district. Dr. Coleman is the first district staff member who validated what parents have said for years and what students have experienced for years. Dr. Coleman was the first district staff member who believed that our students deserved better, and each of them are capable of achieving more, and who took action on those beliefs. Thank you, Dr. Coleman, for leveraging literacy to empower each student in this district. As you have said, in the Oshkosh area school district, we are going to do the hard work to provide all of our students with access to high-quality literacy instruction and to create the conditions for every student to be a competent reader. Thank you for your vision, for your commitment to all students of Oshkosh, and thank you for believing in all students, and thank you for ensuring that all students have the right to read. I'm so very proud to vote yes to adopt CKLA as OASD's core K-5 literacy curriculum tonight. I will do so in honor of the students who have struggled, whose names and faces run through my head tonight, there are way too many than I can ever mention, who would have benefited from this curriculum long ago, some of whom still can't read. I will never stop fighting for those kids, and I will do everything in my power to ensure that we no longer fail our students, because every child deserves to learn to read. Every child has a right to learn to read, and tonight the Oshkosh area school district makes that commitment to our students, because we believe in you, we are investing in you, and you deserve the very best. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad you didn't cut in half, that was excellent. Appreciate it. Dr. Hess?
So I'm the pragmatist. I've heard a lot of talk tonight, I've heard a lot of talk from this board over the last, boy, since I started paying attention, of hopes and dreams and future predictions of things that are going to happen. And I hear individual stories, and those are anecdotes, and ultimately you end up collecting the anecdotes, and you come up with data. And that's what I want to see when I am evaluating curriculum, I want to see hard, real data. And you showed me hard and real data on the field test in terms of the I-Ready stuff. And I can't say that I'm seeing in that any substantial change from that. And that's, I think, something that we all have to be appreciative of, that that was, I think, when we talked about study sync, I said, my first thing that I want to see is hard data that shows that it works. I don't see that here in this particular case. I want to see it, I'm hopeful to see it, but I don't necessarily see it. But then the next thing that I asked for was, I want to see that at least the teachers supported. And in this case, I think the data that you showed me was, maybe there was one that said no, but beyond that, everyone. We got maybe one principal that might be questioning, I think... I think I'm seeing that. But so I can get behind that when all the staff is close to uniformly supportive of. So I will definitely be supporting of this tonight. But I also think that the community has to understand that for all the forward talk that we have of this, this may not be the game changer that we're ultimately hoping for. I want it to be, but we haven't seen it in the data yet. So thank you.
Anyone else? Call the roll, please. Wyman?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Dewitt?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
S?
Aye.
Smolny?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Resolution carries. Congratulations.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Number 22, approval of waiver policy 7250.02, naming of district facilities. Am I wrong? Who is that? Herzog?
Second?
Wright?
Okay.
Discussion?
Then for me.
I just wanted to say that the reason for this resolution is that our naming policy requires that if we're naming something for an individual, that individual must be deceased. Fortunately, Mr. Shady is not deceased and obviously has done a great deal to benefit students under his coaching and leadership at Ashkosh North High School. And so the request is to waive the policy so that we can name this for a living person, namely Mr. Frank Shady.
Call the roll. Carolyn?
Aye.
Dewitt?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
S?
Aye.
Smolny? Gone.
Gone. Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Resolution carries. Thank you. And number 23, approval of naming Ashkosh North High School Field House.
So moved.
Second?
Go ahead.
Wright and?
Dewitt.
Dewitt.
Discussion?
I guess I'm just very happy that we can name this field house after Coach Shady. He's impacted tons and tons of kids' lives in a positive direction in this community. And he's worthy of having the field house named after him. So I'm fully behind this.
Certainly is. Call the roll. Dewitt?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
S?
Aye.
Smolny?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Enthusiastic, yes. Carolyn?
Aye.
Resolution carries. Great. And now we come to the end of commendation of departing board members.
Oh, no, 24.
Oh, my gosh. Okay. I'm good until nine. Approval of 2024-25 budget adjustments.
So moved.
Second.
Herzog and Carolyn.
Discussion? All roll?
Herzog?
Aye.
S?
Aye.
Smolny?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Dewitt? Aye.
Resolution carries. Okay. And now we come to number 25, commendation of departing board member. Want me to go first? You want to stay seated, Steph, or do you want to stand up?
I'm good.
You sit, I'll stand.
Do I have a motion in a second?
Oh, gosh.
So moved.
Second.
Got it. Thank you.
This is resolution number 25 on April 23, 2025. Be it resolved that Ms. Stephanie Carolyn be recognized for her contributions to the Ashkosh Area School District as a member of its Board of Education. As a member of the Board of Education for nine years, Stephanie Carolyn has served as Policy and Governance Committee Chair for two years, Vice Chair for one year, and Committee Member for three years, Legislative Committee Chair for two years and Vice Chair for three years, Education Committee Chair for two years and Vice Chair for three years, Administrator Compensation Committee Vice Chair for one year and Committee Member for three years, Energy Committee Chair for one year and Vice Chair for one year, Facilities and Finance Committee Member for one year, WASB Delegate Assembly Representative for four years, Human Growth and Development Advisory Committee for one year, OEA Negotiations Team for two years, NTDA Negotiations Team for one year, and Alternate for four years, OPEA Negotiations Team Alternate for one year, IATSE Negotiations Team for one year, City Planning Commission Alternate for two years, and Partners in Education Representative for one year. How did you have time to sleep? What started as a project to ensure your kids had consistent elementary school experience after Green Meadow abruptly closed turned into nine years of supporting and advocating for our students as an Ashkosh Area School District Board Member. She was key component in the team that led Project Herb, a one-day beautification project in fall of 2017. She would never say no to any project, but rather, how can I help? Her push for advocating for CAP classes has helped many families get through college with not as much of a financial burden. Athletics and other activities that broaden the student experience were important to her and her family. She understands that when a child is more committed outside the classroom, the more they will be encouraged in the classroom. Stephanie is strong in her commitment to the district and doesn't back down when controversy arises. She always wants to stay true to herself and the students. Whenever we talk about kids during a board conversation, Stephanie always brings it back to what matters: students first. This has been her mantra, and she has been consistent in her voting to ensure that never changed. Be it resolved that a copy of this resolution is forwarded to Ms. Stephanie Carolyn with the appreciation, thanks, and best wishes of her colleagues on the Ashkosh Area School District Board of Education as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education. Resolve this 23rd day of April 2025. Beth Wyman, OASD Board President. Thank you. With beautiful plaque in recognition of your faithful service. Your will. So kind of you. And your performance.
Now I turn it to Barb.
Thank you. I serve on the Wisconsin Association of School Boards' Board of Directors and on behalf of the Wisconsin Association of School Boards and its executive director, Mr. Dan Rossmiller, it's my pleasure to present you with a certificate of commendation, not only for your nine years of service on our board, but also what you've contributed to the WASB by your active participation as a member of the Policy and Resolutions Committee at the annual January convention. So I'd like to present this with thanks of the WASB.
Thank you, Barb. Would you like to say a few words?
I would like to say a few words. Thank you, although I'm afraid I'm going to cry. Thank you for the kind words. I can't believe it's been nine years. What am I going to do on my Wednesday nights? I'd like to express my gratitude to the Ashkosh Area School District. Serving on the board has been an honor and a privilege. I'd also like to thank the community who elected and supported me for three terms. As Beth mentioned, I first became involved in school board issues when my son was entering kindergarten. Six weeks before school started, the board had voted to close Green Meadow Elementary. Displaced Green Meadow students were sent to Lakeside and Tipler. Lakeside, my home school, became a K-3 school with grades four and five bused to Tipler. I remember thinking that the situation would be resolved before it affected my family. But after three years, there was still no permanent solution. That is when I began attending school board meetings. It was there that I met Liz Lynch, a mother advocating for improved conditions at Oaklawn Elementary. Buckets were collecting water that leaked into classrooms, and the conditions was unacceptable. As Therese Halliburton noted during a recent visit, Oaklawn was a school with essentially two small corridors. This was the direct result of putting facility needs on the back burner. I'm sharing this story because the long-range facility plan is something that I am passionate about and one of the reasons I ran for a seat on the board. I am grateful that the board has implemented and maintained a long-range facilities plan that will benefit our students and community for generations. Working on three successful referendums to build and update our schools is the highlight of my tenure. I leave knowing the legacy we built will continue, and I would like to congratulate our two new board members, Michael Ford and Molly Smilnek. I am confident they will do great things. All three of my children attended the district from kindergarten to graduation. Nate, who graduated in 2020, is working for the Las Vegas Raiders. Max, who graduated in 2022, is attending CU Boulder with a major in astrophysics. And my daughter is headed to Villanova in the fall. When I talk about the success of my children, I take no credit. The credit goes to the teachers in our district, teachers like Mrs. Davis at Lakeside, who taught my kids to love math, and teachers like Mrs. Graesley, who ignited a passion for reading in all of my children. Ken Levine and Brett Hartman taught and coached Nate both on and off the field. Marcy Mallow, Trent Scott, Andrew Britton, and Kyle Curtis inspired my daughter in more ways than I can describe. And my son Max still talks about the big little collection that Mr. Shear had at Tipler. Every employee, even though they may not teach, has an impact on our students. I still remember Sandy, our best driver, who waves at us as she still passes our home. I'm grateful to custodians like Mr. Chase, who decorated his cleaning machine, and principals like Erin Cole, who showed my kids how to be a leader during the shooting incident at West. I say thank you to these individuals and many more because you had a profound impact on my children, and you share in their success. I would also like to thank my family and acknowledge your support and sacrifice for the past nine years. Serving on the board is not for the faint of heart, and it was especially difficult during COVID when board members received threats and we had to have police at our meetings. As you move forward, please remember to ask the most important question: what is best for students? That question was always my guiding light. Please continue to tackle hard decisions. As I've said many times, the hard thing is usually the right thing. Please continue to be a voice that supports mental health initiatives, as I've done frequently. Mental health matters. I'd like to conclude with one of my favorite quotes: "Sometimes leadership is about planting trees under whose shade you'll never sit." During my tenure, we built three, almost four, schools, and I'm proud of that. The shade that the board created over recent years will be enjoyed by many, and the opportunity to serve is something I will cherish forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Back to the agenda. Request for future agenda items?
Did we vote on that?
We didn't vote on that.
Oh, my gosh.